We give the patient time. All this meeting to the board at 4:15 of 9:00 in Sunday's commission. Please join me first and finally meet. As little we can to speak about the United States of America, including the planet, religious saints, conization of God, even visible with liberty and justice for all. Eight is on this night. The group's goal call. Mr. Montgomery. Senator Watt. Mr. Watkins. Present. Mr. Young.
Hi.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Present.
Mr. Marzky.
Present.
Senator. Thank you. Ms. Welsh.
Present.
ARS President, we have a full full commission and tense debate forum. At this time, we will approve the previous month's minutes. If anyone have any comments or corrections to the minutes. Hearing done. Take a roll call vote for approval, Mr. Montgomery.
Aye.
Senator Watt.
Aye.
Senator Watkins.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Mr. Marzky.
Aye.
Mr. Saunders.
Aye.
Ms. Welsh.
Abstain, I wasn't present last month.
Thank you, our heard that. Terrible aside, motion carries, minutes are approved. Next, we move to call to public. Pursuant to ARS Section 38-431.01, letter H, this is an opportunity for the public to comment. Individuals are invited to address the commission on any issue within the official jurisdiction. Since commissioners may not discuss items that are not specifically identified on the agenda, commission action taken as a result of the comment will be limited to directing staff to study the matter, responding to any criticism or stipulating the matter for further consideration and decision at a later date. Our closing due round rules, like the candidates. So we'll back up a little bit and read the round rules. Please turn off cell phones or unsilenced ringers. Please keep the light to other stakeholders, no applause, no glee, no cheering. If you desire to see the loud speaker information forms, you must submit it to the planning staff before the start of the meeting, or you can do it now, bless me. Speakers must use microphones to catch the sound, instead of listening. We observe the following time minutes for speakers. Five minutes for the call to the public, ten minutes for advocates, five minutes for supporters for those opposed, five minutes for advocates' rebuttal. Each elected county supervisor appoints three commissioners to stay for your terms. Up to three commissioners are from cities, at least six commissioners are from unincorporated areas. A commissioner's services program, a quorum is by commissioners. A majority of the votes passes a motion, a title of advance. For special use permits, the title of time, vote triggers a reading hearing at the next meeting. Special use documents are approved by the commission. Appeals of special use decisions are considered by the board of supervisors. Appeal procedures can be found on the county website, or assistance, contact the case plan. Documents evidence special use requests require results in a recommendation forwarded by the commission to the board of supervisors. To voice disagreements with these recommendations, you may attend the board supervisor's public Think we're ready for calls public now? I have two forms. I noticed that the subject matter is proposed floodplain regulation changes. I want to let you know that you're more than welcome to speak. This commission probably will not have the subject function for them though. So first I ask Elaine, I brought, do you wish to speak?
I do.
When you get to the microphone, please state your name and address, and you have
My name is Dwayne Grove, and I live at 3343 West Transrapid Road. And is that it? What's your name? Alright. So, yes, I'm aware that I'm going to speak about this, and it will mostly involve dead peers, but this is more for people that are going to be listening in on this conversation with evidence. I don't think people quite understand what this actually is. This floodplain regulatory change is not just changes. These are things that are going to cost people lots of money, and it's going to cost individuals money, as well as small ag. Specifically for small agriculture, when you look at this proposed regulatory change here, and you just go to the definition sign, you're going to see that under the definitions of agricultural exemption, which is protected, it's part of the ARS actually, that help protect small farmers. So people like me who start a farm can come to a place where if I have the right amount of land, if I have the right criteria in place, if I do my due diligence, and I set everything up the way I need to set it up, I should be good to go. Meaning that I don't have to deal with constant permits, constant dealing with county, constant dealing with regulatory being jammed down the throat, okay? So with this floodplain regulatory change, they're specifically going after small ag, and if it's right there in the definitions, you just go to the agricultural exemption, you're going to see it, and they're going to say, yes, as a matter of fact, I'm going to use my phone, my cell phone's off, but I actually have it here so I can read it to you. So the definition on this is agricultural exempt. Use or occupation of land improvements for general agricultural purposes according to Arizona statute, Title 11, Chapter 6, Part 2, Arizona statute, Title 42, Chapter 12, Article 4, is exempt from all provision for this. And then there's a little dot, and it says, some agricultural structures or structures on farms are excused from Cochise County local building exalted codes. And, here we go. If the tract of land concerned, despite any or some more contiguous commercialators. And the dot next to it, this is one you need to pay attention to if you're a farmer or rancher. However, since Cochise County participates in the National Flood Insurance Program, this exemption does not exclude agricultural structures from Cochise County floodplain management regulations. Does anybody play Uger? Even know the game? Okay, let's call it trump card, alright? And that's basically done. So agriculture is finished with this, pretty much small ag. Because if I do build any structure now, I'm going to have to get an engineer's stamp, I'm going to have to have it raised the foot off the ground, and all the crap that's in here, I'm sorry. But this is more than just a regulatory change. This is going to cost people lots of money. Cochise County was known as a farm and ranch community, is it not? I mean, so this is a part of what we do here. And so when this kind of stuff, you know, I came from Betsan area all the way over here just to make this speech, because I know, you know, maybe 10 people are going to hear this, but I was not aware of this until somebody posted online, and this isn't just going to affect farming, you know? Someone else is going to come talk about the owner builder opt out as well. So I'm just here to say that I am absolutely 100% opposed to this, and I think that people need to pay more attention to what's going on when they try to sneak this stuff through, because there's more going on here than just regulatory changes. It's going to cost people lots of money. In fact, one more thing I'm going to say, and then I'll let the other guy speak. But I'm building a house under the opt out right now, and I just had filter drawn in, okay? Had a contractor do it, I paid someone to bring it in. So I know how much it costs, alright, to bring filter in to get my house ready to go and get prepped for my foundation, okay? This proposed type of change here, this is going to cost people lots of money, alright? It costs me thousands of dollars to do that, and it would cost me thousands more. Because now, even if I'm on a hill, or it's the way this works, it's got to be a foot off the ground, and I have to have an engineering stamp, and I have no idea how much that costs. So that's what I'm going to say.
You have another speaker? Sorry. Clay?
Yeah. Clay Great House.
Come forward, please. Mr. Grayhouse.
Great House.
Great House, thank you. State, your name and address, give that button.
My name is Clay Great House, 3141 South Halloues, two corners of. And I just wanted to also voice my disgruntledness towards this floodplain change, because it really is a major issue. It's, and it just seemed like it's being approached by the county kind of really nobody. We'll just put him in business. I don't understand it, but I do know that, well, I also recognize that the, I think the recruits, all Cochise County's, partners of Cochise County, owner builds are out there. It's about 500 people in that group, and they've been there in the past war. I'm also here to say, I did, we get all kinds of emails from people that are hearing about this, and are saying that we're afraid to move down here, this is going to lose our opportunity to use the opt out. So I don't know, you know, I just don't understand what all this is, but it is a big change in what's being sneaked in the back door, because it's a lot of things legally to do. Anyway, I just wish it wasn't so milly-milly, and that we all had a chance to do more of this before it gets passed.
We have our first item on the agenda. Document RC 23-14. Applicant requests a resale from SR 43 to RU 4. Applicant is from those. Are you present? Can I snuggle it? That's right. Hold on. We'll be the finding director of your work.
Good afternoon. This is an applicant initiated rezoning request. The applicant is Ronald Kletus Jr. The current zoning is SR 43, single residential, one dwelling per 43,000 square feet. The proposed zoning is RU 4, Rule 1, dwelling per four acres. The land use is category D. It is part of the Mid-Soul for Springs area plan, and the plan indicates this parcel and all surrounding ones are appropriate for medium density residential use. This is an undeveloped parcel. The applicant proposes constructing a single family home and barn on site. The property is on the north side of Ironwood Road, which is a county maintained local road. The site includes two parcels, which together equal 4.5 acres. Here is the general location, it's in sun sites, the area is mostly zoned, single family residential, and the nearest rule zoning is about a half mile south. In terms of factors in favor of approval, it complies with all applicable factors used by staff to analyze rezoning requests. It's in keeping with the character of existing development. Except on paper, this is a rural area. It's sparsely developed with a single family residential lots. We received one letter in support of the request, no letters of opposition. In terms of factors against approval, none are stated, but it is spot zoning from a residential to rule category. However, the applicant does plan to build a single family home on site. Here is a drone shot of the site. The road in the foreground is Ironwood Road. With that, I will pause for applicant discussion, applicant statement, and I believe Ronald, the applicant, is in person today.
Thank you. Let's unfold. Name, address, and microphone, please, and we got 10 minutes.
From class 2. Our current address is 1915 West Cassidale View, Grand Lot 170 in Benson, Arizona. We're just looking to rezone our property in years, so we can have a larger garage than our house. There's the two of us, we have a big RV, we'd like to park our RV in the garage, but current zoning won't allow a garage bigger than the house. So that's, we're ready to acquire another acre, so we could change some something. Do you need us?
Not this moment.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Now to put the public hearing on this matter open. Is there anyone in the audience or online that would like to speak to the status? Hearing done, public hearing is closed. This is a time for commission discussion. Do you have any questions with applicant or staff? Mr. Young and Ms. Welsh, you still with us?
Yes.
Yes, I am.
Any questions?
None for me.
Myself neither.
Thank you. I need your after summary, Mr. Johnson.
Staff recommends forwarding the rezoning request of SR 43, single family, one dwelling per 43,000 square feet to rule RU 4, one dwelling per four acres on a 4.5 acre site to the board of supervisors with a recommendation of approval with the following conditions: combine the two parcels subject to the request before permit issuance in order to meet the minimum lot requirement for RU 4 zoning, which is four acres, and make this a buildable lot, the applicant will need to combine lots, and that's the reason for this condition. And again, this must be done before we can issue a building permit. This has been noticed to be heard by the board of supervisors on August 29th. That concludes my presentation, and I have included a sample motion for the consideration of the commission.
On which?
Attorney.
First.
I'm hoping to recommend the rule of board supervisor between the zoning staff and RC 23-14, and from SR 43 to RU 4, factors in favor of the rule, that's to do with the findings of fact.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Now a call for the question. Starting from the discussion we've already had. Mr. Montgomery, your call.
Your line.
Senator Watt.
Aye.
Mr. Watkins.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Mr. Marzky.
Aye.
Mr. Saunders.
Aye.
Ms. Welsh.
Aye.
Terrible aside, unanimous. This item will be forwarded to the board supervisors with the recommendation of approval. Moving on, document RC 23-15, Austin Henley. Applicant requests a rezoning of RU 36 to RU 4 on 7.2 acres. Is Jennifer Johnson present?
I'm here.
She's online.
She will take care of her. Over, thank you. Mr. Lockland, are you going to present the report?
Yes, thank you. Good afternoon. This is an applicant initiated rezoning request. The applicant is Jennifer Johnson, who is with us tonight online. The current zoning is RU 36, residential, one dwelling per 36,000 square feet. The proposed zoning is RU 4, Rule 1, dwelling per four acres, the land use is D rule. There is no area plan in place. The property is undeveloped. The applicant would like to rezon the property and place a single family dwelling on the property, as well as some accessory uses related to food production and resource conservation. The property is just outside of McNeil. The nearest county maintained road is Rucker Canyon Road, that's a local dirt road. The nearest home is about 800 feet south, the area is very sparsely developed. There is no parcel history. The site includes three contiguous parcels, each of which are about 2.5 acres in size. Access is via a north-southeastment that runs between Austin Henley and Rucker Canyon Roads. In total, the request is 7.2 acres in size. Factors in favor of approval: the request complies with all applicable rezoning factors used to analyze rezoning requests, it would be in keeping with the character of existing development. This is a very rural area. The zoning of the, the existing zoning would allow up to nine houses on the site, which the existing road and infrastructure could likely not support, not at this time. Finally, the request would bring the zoning into compliance with the underlying land use. No factors against the request were identified. With that, I will pause for commission discussion and the applicant's statements. And again, the applicant is online.
Hi, I am Jennifer Johnson. I'm a single mom. I actually just recently acquired this property a few months back, and my biggest goal is to teach my children farming and resource conservation, as in water catchment, and really just giving back to the earth. And I, that's essentially what, what my main plan or goal for the land is.
Thank you. It's time for the public hearing. Is there anyone in person or in the hall of peace that would like to speak about the Hearing done, there is time for the applicant's rebuttal. I'm assuming you would wait that, Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Thank you. The public hearing is closed, this is time for commission discussion. Are there any questions of the applicant or staff? I do have one question for the applicant. Ms. Johnson, I was wondering, items number four and nine on your site plan, number nine system accommodation, what kind of building is that?
Um, what I'm planning on is possibly doing like once a week workshops where I would invite maybe other kids or other adults that want to learn how to build or farm. You know, it's not anything formal or large, I was looking more on just small, community based people in the area, maybe schools, or anybody that would be interested in learning off-grid farming techniques.
Thank you. And I understand that you've been reminding you would need special use to do that.
Absolutely, I did see the email about that. I was going over the permit, and I will submit the form once I get, you know, all the details. I don't have my nonprofit totally solidified yet, I have it with Arizona, but not with the federal government yet. So I'm trying to, once I get that all done, I'm going to finalize the rest of the plans I have in.
There we go. Thank you. Anyone else have any questions on the commission? Hearing done, I need your after summary, please.
With staff recommends approval. This has been noticed to be heard by the board of supervisors on August 29th, and that concludes my presentation. I have included a sample motion on this slide for consideration of the commission.
I'm hoping to recommend the rule, board supervisor, rezoning, document, RC 23-15, from RU 36 to RU 4, factors in favor of approval, that's the findings of fact.
Thank you, Mr. Watt. Do you have any session of dissolution? Hearing done, I don't call for the questions. Senator Murray.
Go ahead.
Yes, please.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Watt. Mr. Watkins.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Mr. Marzky.
Aye.
Mr. Saunders.
Aye.
Ms. Welsh.
Aye.
Terrible aside, unanimous. The items will be forwarded to the board of supervisors with the recommendation of approval. Thank you very much. Congratulations. Moving right along, our next document is number RC, Page 2006, Intermodal Building. Applicant is requesting a rezoning from RU 36 to RU 4 on 4.99 acres. Applicants names are Michael Wright and Kira McKinnock, RU 11.
I believe the applicants are online. Michael and Kira, if you can hear us, I believe you're muted.
This shouldn't have your phones pre-proceed, without them present, wait for it to get started. Okay. We are. We will, thank you.
Okay. Alright, we can hear you. Okay, just one minute, I'm going to provide the presentation, I'll let you know when it's your turn. Good afternoon. This is an applicant initiated rezoning request. The applicants are Michael Wright and Kira McKinnock. The current zoning is SR 8, single residential, one dwelling per 8,000 square feet. The proposed zoning is RU 4, Rule 1, dwelling per four acres. The growth area is D, the plan designation is rule. So no land use changes are necessary or proposed. This area is not in an area plan, the parcel is undeveloped, and the applicant would like to start a small farm on site. The property is located on a 4.99 acre parcel, APN 40515080C. It's north of Double Adobe Road between Central Highway and State Route 191. There is no parcel history, however, it's within the former Casa Adobe Unit 2 subdivision, which was a subdivision platted in the 1970s. The subdivision never developed, was partially abandoned by the board of supervisors in 1994. Subsequent to that, a large portion of the subdivision came under public ownership due to multiple tax delinquencies. In 2008, the county initiated rezoning of over 280 acres. At the same time, the county abandoned nine public right of ways within the subdivision. Access to this parcel and others is now via private easement. Here is the zoning map. You can see the mix of SR 8 and RU 4, where parcels were consolidated. The subject parcel was not included in either of the previous rezonings because it was privately owned. And here is the concept plan provided by the applicant. In this case, the applicant would like to establish a small farm with a greenhouse and shipping container shed. This sort of use is more in line with rural zoning than single family residential. And here are some site photos. The paved road that you can see is San Gabriel Road, which takes you to the San Bernardino National Wildlife Refuge field office. Factors in favor of the approval: the proposed rule zoning would bring the property into compliance with the underlying rule of land use. The request complies with all applicable rezoning factors used to analyze rezoning requests. The parcel is within an abandoned subdivision. And as I mentioned in my memo, there is a history of tax delinquent property and county initiated abandonment in rezoning requests. While the request is an intent, um, let's see. Also, there is no community water system or sewer in the area. The level of permitted development allowed by SR 8 zoning could not be supported by the utilities or infrastructures in the area. It's essentially equivalent to about 27 single family homes. The proposed RU 4 zoning is more appropriate given the extent of existing utilities and infrastructure. And again, it's also an expansion of RU 4 zoning to the east immediately adjacent. There were no factors against approval identified. And with that, I'll pause for commission discussion and applicant statement, and the applicant is with us online. Michael or Kira, are you able to hear us or speak? Michael or Kira, are you able to hear us or speak? And can you hear us, Michael or Kira?
Yes, we are. I'm not sure exactly why we're not able to hear you on this through the call-in. But what we are proposing was to have a small farm and a greenhouse. Hello?
We can hear you.
Okay, awesome. So we were proposing a small farm and a greenhouse. Initially, we'd need to put a container on the property. Yes, initially, we need to put a small container on the property so that we'll be able to install equipment and for the greenhouse build and for farming. And that's, that was basically what we have. We are planning on using organic farming techniques and also some permaculture experiments. So that was, that was basically our. Hello?
We can hear you.
Is there anything else?
Do you have any other comments?
Um, that was called.
No.
Public hearing portion is now open. I call for comments from other persons, either in favor of or against in the audience or online. Go forward. Thank you, sir. Anyone online? Hearing done?
Yes.
And it's the applicant's rebuttal time. Will we wait?
Yes.
Yeah.
Public hearing is closed. Time for the commission discussion. Are there any questions that the applicant or staff?
Sir. Yes.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Mr. Wright, you stated that you wanted, you are interested in developing a pent acre farm?
I'm sorry? I was hoping that was something.
You stated that you have a plan to develop 10 acres of a small farm, right?
Yeah. Yeah.
Is there an established water source there? Do you have water rights? Is there an existing well for your water supply?
Uh, no, there's no existing water there. There, so we were planning on using rain catchment with tanks. And so we're just, we'll have a plan for both rainwater usage and for extra support with water delivery.
Yeah, I'm not sure if he heard that, but he stated he was planning on using a rain catchment system and supplementing with water delivery.
There's nothing seen very obvious. It's that you're going to irrigate land in that area. You should try to secure a water right for your land.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yeah. There's not enough water to rain fall precipitation or rain to facilitate a farm operation of any amount of strike.
Well, yeah, we may do a part of a third of a farm. We're, we're about planning on large commercial style farming endeavor. We actually are putting some of the permaculture on organic farming techniques. So we also are, uh, we decided, we are going to start a small, except that everything that we call is actually a part of the stuff. So at this point, we would be looking to, as I said, enable the supplement the rain catchment with water delivery.
Water is not a move like a lot of the other, like, I'm going to re-trump you in your comments?
Um, for people?
You stated that we, considering you have a lot of, that's correct?
Okay. Well, one more time, I guess, for some reason, like, um, you would be capable of seeing or staying out. It's a long time.
Can you hear me?
Yes. Right.
You said that you were planning to have water delivered to your farm or not, please?
Yes.
Uh, I don't know if you have any idea how much water they supply than they provide. I still believe that you need to establish a reliable water supply to ensure some flow of assistance for farming and land use.
Okay. Um, so we were, we were, as I said, planning on, um, so what would you suggest outside of, um, a level of?
Thank you. Thank you, great people. Yeah. The applicant's study up on the, hey, you mean that's in place? This property, to my knowledge, is not going to have any other ways. But therefore, to remember how big the property is, you cannot irrigate over 1.99 acres. So I would, um, because you're not going to get water rights for anywhere than 1.99 acres. And then I have another question. That was, that was a state. Please study up on the, rules that go against our fact. My question is, what is your access to the property? How will you get there?
Okay, so there is, and is that that runs, um, I'm not exactly, from that, the private easement from the, going to the San Bernardino. There is a private easement that runs right to the property, actually, right to the corner, which would be our east corner of our property. So that, that small road of private easement, we are able to access the property to that.
That's the gas station, correct?
Yes.
And, um, that's something that's allowing people to use their easement strategy. Can we go to some deeper?
We've contacted the, the gas company and, and gave us the, the, um, the property and allowed us to put a lock on the gate for their, for that easement. So we had initially contacted, um, I think it was, uh, right after we had brought that property and they gave us, they gave us the permission. They also came out and, um, and to give us access to that property when we were having the, um, the survey desk for that property.
All right. All right. But please study up on any problems.
Okay, so yes, we were, um, so we're constantly in contact with Kinder Morgan for, um, for access as well and for future use as far as any large equipment that may come down that road.
Would like to ask you. Okay. Okay. Well, in addition to the good advice by my commissioners, I have the opinion that this is a private endeavor and it's not the commission's purpose or intent to guarantee success of it. That is, to the property owners themselves, we tend to try and, and increase in capital there. Wish them well. And I'm sure they'll figure something out to address the water. But it's not the commission's purpose to guarantee that they succeed. You wish them well and hope they can.
Thank you, Mr. Montgomery. Along those lines, the chair would like to remind the applicants about Mr. Watkins' question on the asset. He's never heard such a thing. I really wouldn't depend on that long term, but as Mr. Montgomery pointed out, that is your privilege and your problem. It does seem tenuous at best. Are there any other questions from the commission for applicant or staff? Hearing done. Planning Director summary and recommendation to base Ms. McLaughlin.
With that, uh, this has been noticed to be heard by the Board of Supervisors on August 29th. The staff does recommend approval and I have included a sample motion for the commission's consideration.
Thank you. Fault in motion, please.
Thank you.
Mr. McLaughlin?
I'm reading the right of the report to the Board of Supervisors, rezoning document, R.C. 23-16, positive location, located in Albrechtso, 435, 77, that is the 046A, from SR8 to RU4. Factors in favor of the report constitution of the plan. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Saunders. In terms of discussion, I have a question. I think this is just my error to do the SR8 is correct. I had, I'm very surprised.
It is SR8.
SR8, thank you. That's the motion. Is there any discussion of this? Fall calling for the question. Mr. Montgomery?
Go larger, please.
Go large.
All right.
Mr. Watkins?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Very.
Mr. Marcy?
Aye.
Saunders?
Aye.
Ms. Louts?
Aye.
General time. Mr. Marcy, your reasoning, sir?
Yes, uh, I don't. I think we should approve it though we see some type of a legal grant away granted to the property because the domain were proven something for somebody to use an easement that normally is not open to the public.
If I could point out, there actually, there is legal access from an easement. Um, the, the gas line is a lot easier to access. It's much more direct and it's been cleared. The easements that are in place that serve it are overgrown and not well maintained. They do technically have legal access, though.
Oh, okay. Change my vote to A.
I maintain my name.
Using water reasons?
I don't think that they have a reliable water supply in that area. And it's not in line for typical operations in that area.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, commissions. This motion has been approved.
It's all in the case.
Page one. The site will be forwarded to the Board of Supervisors with the recommendation of approval. Any person not agreeing with this action should attend the Board of Supervisors meeting dealing with this document. Thank you very much. Hearing with a dinar, need to go break or shall we proceed?
Go on. We have received.
Let's go. Docket SU 23-17, Three Sisters Solar. The applicant requests special use to construct a 300-megawatt solar plant and battery storage system. Is applicant present?
Yes, yes.
What is your name, sign me right down, don't come forward yet?
My name is Eric Dallas.
Thank you. Mr. Ellis, we'll speak to you in just a moment.
Yeah.
Planning Directors' report, please, Ms. McLaughlin.
Good evening. This is a special use authorization request, Docket SU 2317, Three Sisters Solar. The applicant, THISBN LLC, represented by Diana Sandoval as well as Eric, requests special use authorization to construct, operate, maintain a proposed 300-megawatt phased solar energy power plant and battery, battery energy solar system, BEST project on approximately 2,450 acres of land on the parcels included on application and in my staff report. The applicant proposes to construct the project to deliver electricity generated by local Coches County Electrical Districts and/or other public power agencies and utilities in Arizona and the Southwest. The PV solar facility in BEST will be compliant with industry standards and applicable safety codes. The project site is southeast of the Wilcox Playa, 11 miles southeast of Interstate 10, 14 miles south of the city of Wilcox, and approximately three miles east of Highway 191. All property subject to the request is undeveloped and currently used for cattle grazing. Here's the concept plan. On the concept, the applicant notes project boundaries, fencing locations, setbacks, drainage patterns, flood areas, existing well locations, proposed internal roads, existing external roads. The gentai line, large poles, access gates, PV array locations. The blockish grayish shapes are the PV panels. And the project substation is in red. The battery storage yard is in pink. There's also a wildlife linkage area in the western portion of the site. Uh, here's a zoomed-in view. The point of interconnection is shown and more detail of significant project elements like the substation and battery yard are shown. There are several important details on this slide, specifically the wildlife-friendly fencing, which is mandated by zoning, is shown. There's a BEST detailed PV rack elevation and array spacing. And here's the site. This is a drone shot looking southwest from the intersection of Kimsey Road and Anderson Road. You can see the edge of the Wilcox Playa a little bit in the background. Let's see, there is a, it's a very flat area with some intermittent floodplain. The entire project area is within D, rule land use. It's not within an area plan. The comprehensive plan encourages the use of solar energy resources and element E renewable energy. GO1 states, "Support the development of local renewable energy projects and technologies." This is implemented by several policies, including encouraging utility-scale renewable energy projects using the University of Arizona's Renewable Energy Opportunity Analysis and Other Resources as a Guide for Determining the Suitability of Proposals in Any One Location. On this side slide, I superimpose that analysis onto the site. Areas in yellow and orange are very, are determined to be well-suited for solar energy production by that study. Here's the zoning map. The entire subject area is zoned RU4. Section 60107 of the zoning regulation states RU, rural zoning, are established to allow consideration of some more intense non-residential uses as special uses that are inappropriate in more densely populated urban suburban areas that may, under some circumstances, be appropriate in rural areas. Solar energy power plants are considered special uses within rural zoning. These are land-intensive, non-residential uses that are not appropriate or even viable in more densely populated urban suburban areas of the county. There are 10 factors we use to evaluate all special use requests. In this case, all 10 apply. The first two we just discussed, which are compliance with land use and zoning. Okay. Regarding development along major streets, this criterion seeks to minimize road cuts that create unsafe traffic conflicts, hatters, traffic congestion, and abstract the functioning of arterials. The applicant proposes direct ingress egress from Kimsey Road, which is an unpaved minor access local road which runs east-west. Nearest paved road is Kansas Settlement Road, which is a rural major collector road. Uh, Kimsey Road is county-maintained from Kansas Settlement Road to Anderson Road. This is a three-mile segment. The project begins where the county maintenance ends, on Kimsey Road. The limited amount of access points and low-traffic demand of the use once constructed complies with the requirement to minimize road cuts and associate, that are associated with unsafe traffic conflicts. Regarding traffic circulation, there are two basic project phases. Construction, which will last approximately 18 months, and the operation-maintenance phase, which is estimated to be about 40 years. The applicant provided estimates for both phases in terms of traffic impact. Once construction is complete, this will be a Once construction is complete, this will be a remotely monitored site. There will be little to none traffic on a regular basis. There are two conditions of approval recommended to mitigate construction traffic concerns. They are as followed. The project owner shall submit in advance or concurrent with the first commercial permit a traffic improvement and maintenance plan which successfully mitigates project impacts to Kimsey and Anderson Roads to the satisfaction of the county. The plan shall include, but not limited to, a traffic control plan, dust control plan, road stabilization plan, and road maintenance plan. The project owner shall apply a chemical stabilizer, such as magnesium chloride, to Kimsey from, to Kimsey Road, from Kansas Settlement Road to the western project limits no fewer than four times per year during project construction phase. Roads preparation and application shall follow best vantage of practices to improve product performance and shall be in accordance with manufactured specifications. Magnesium chloride is a dust suppressant. The project complies with adequate services and infrastructure factor. As this is an unmanned site, there is, that is intended to collect energy, the requirements for services and infrastructure once constructed are minimal. Regarding site development standards, per section eighteen twenty-four oh two zoning regulations, setbacks from property boundaries or edge of road ways for solar energy plants shall be in a minimum twice the minimum setback requirement for the respective zoning district or shall be equal to the height of the tall structure, whichever is greater. Setback distance should be measured from the edge of the solar array, including excluding security fencing, screening, or berms. The application includes several parcels of land. The majority of the site is already owned by the applicant and purchase agreements for the remainder of the site are in place. The applicant will need to either combine the lots or receive a waiver from the commission granting setback from project setback boundaries rather than parcel boundaries. Lot coverage and array spacing. The rule land use restricts lot coverage to a maximum twenty-five percent. However, section eighteen twenty-four oh three D exempts ground mounted systems for lot coverage or impervious surface standards if the soil under the collector is maintained with perennial vegetated ground cover and not compacted. As a recommended condition, the project owner shall maintain the project site with perennial vegetated ground cover and non-compact soil. Regating is not required during project construction. The existing vegetation will be mowed rather than removed completely. To combine the potential lake effects, to combat the potential lake effect created by large solar groupings, that also recommends a condition that the project owner shall exclusively use PV panels with anti-reflectivity coating that is integral to the panel. In addition, as a separate condition, all solar racks shall be installed to maintain no less than a twelve foot minimum clear distance measured from outer edge of panels between all tracker rows north-south. Regarding dust, the applicant will need to file a notice of intent to declare land and stormwater pollution prevention plan with the state. On page twelve of the memo, the applicant lists several best management practices to control dust. I suggest these be incorporated as a condition. There are also two roadway conditions related to dust. Finally, regarding water conservation, as stated on the application, the project requires less than twenty, two hundred thirty thousand gallons of water per year. That's equivalent to about four residential homes, assuming one hundred and forty-six gallons a day per, per average Arizona resident. The applicant submitted the studies listed on the slide at the county's request. All were attached to their application at the time of application dismissal for the commission's review. I also provided a brief summation of each in my memo, and there's a little bit on this slide. The graphic to the right is a visual simulation provided by the applicant. Visual simulations were generated for six discrete locations near the project. All locations were outside project boundaries facing the project. The closest simulation was sixty-eight feet southeast of the proposed, the nearest proposed structure. That's what's shown on this slide. The remainder of the visual simulations range in a distance between one thousand five hundred and ten feet and three point four one miles. The difference in the appearance of the project site when compared to existing conditions seemed visually negligible when you got further away, clearly. In terms of public input, letters were mailed to all property owners within fifteen hundred feet of the subject property. A legal ad was published in the Sierra Vista Herald, and I posted legal notices on the property. To date, state has, staff has received one letter of opposition, one letter for, one letter with off-site impact concerns, but not necessarily for or against. All written responses were attached for the commission's review. I do want to mention I received one additional letter of support late yesterday from actually a landowner that owns three contiguous parcels within the area that's surrounded by the project itself. Little island there, and he was in support. Factors in favor of the request, the project is consistent with applicable policies of the comprehensive plan and the purpose of the rural zoning district. The project complies with most of the criteria used to evaluate special use requests. The site plan submitted complies with most applicable site development standards and conditions. Once completed, the project would generate negligible levels of traffic and would use minimal water services, services and infrastructure. The project would serve as a clean source of energy, offsetting greenhouse gas emissions, reducing the need to generate electricity from fossil fuels. And the electricity generated by this project offers enhanced grid resiliency and support for future load growth needs. In terms of factors against approval, project construction will likely generate fugitive dust, general compatibility, and set of concerns. The surrounding terrain is fat, flats, the area is undeveloped. The project has a large footprint. Aiding in wildlife concerns, the Wilcox Playa, Cochise Lakes area is considered an important bird area. Also, AZ Game and Fish considers the general area to be important wildlife connectivity zone. The project risks reducing habitat connectivity and wildlife movement, migration, unless specific design features as recommended as conditions are incorporated to provide a pathway for the wildlife. And I'm now going to pause for commission discussion and presentation from the applicant. And I believe he would like to provide a PowerPoint for you tonight.
Charles. Good morning.
Sure, I'll look this thing out. Should be able to answer. So, first things first, my name is Eric Dallas. My address is four zero two five East Full Dust Avenue in Phoenix, Arizona. And this is sure it's the Sierra.
No, you can just tell me.
Sure, better and secure.
We can answer for you with that note.
It'd be wonderful. That word as well. So, it's, so, thank you for hosting us here today. My name is Eric Collins. I'm the vice president of projects wellness and rightness. I am a Arizona native from the elementary school, high school, West Phoenix, and grew up here. And just want to start off by, by saying in terms of how we approach these projects, we're really focused on doing these projects, obviously, we build right. And when we talk about doing right, there's a number of criteria that we, that we consider. First is site selection. We really need to place these projects places where they're sensitive to the community, where they don't have a big impact on visual resources for the local community, where they, where they can also have a minimal impact on, on environment resources. And so you'll see that hopefully reflected in the presentation that I'll give today. Another big element in how we approach projects is community engagement. We invest in the projects and we stay here as owners for long term, and we're really serious about making sure that we reach out early and often and go above and beyond with the minimum requirements are. Hopefully, you'll see that we've, we've filled that here in our application to you today. We do say in the projects, some developers come in and they flip, and then we can just kind of roll them in out. That's not how we approach business. Our founder, Martin Urban, is buying us, and we stay in this investor. We'll be here for forty years. We absolutely tend to become a full-fledged member of the community. People are even taking a number of steps to do that. Another thing would be that we want to be a responsible steward, and so we want to also support local organizations, make sure that we meet with residents, local leaders, local officials, and ensure we can do whatever we can to be excellent stewards and members of the community. So, just my overall approach, that's how we approach the projects, and hopefully you see that reflected in our presentation today. So, in terms of, we're, I'll talk for a few minutes about the company. We have that really quick. We'll focus on the project and, and the visual simulations and conservation measures, as well as community engagement. And then obviously an opportunity for you all to ask any questions. We can get right into it. So, next slide is on Brian. So, the company that I work for, I've been there for, for three years. I've been doing this development work now for twenty years, and we have a hundred employees. We've been in business for five years. We have seven projects that we're working on in Arizona. One is in Penalt County that's going to be moving into construction first order this year. They received a unanimous planning and zoning and board supervisors approval. We have the interaction agreement, the power contract on all the major permits, and we are hiring a contractor there. And my colleague, Mira Satcha, will talk a little bit about how we've pushed up community engagements and the things that we're doing there in Pal County as well with this project that's now moving into operation. We have some major actors. There's the group that invested from the Canadian pension plan investment. They placed pension money into infrastructure projects like this. And we also have one of the largest infrastructure actors on the planet in the name of GIP. So, real company who've got good folks behind the company. I used to work there as a public service. I'm a former manager of technology innovation. I know utility business, and we know what we're doing. Next slide, please. So, from a project review perspective, so, you know, the major elements, my eyesight is horrible. If I grab my computer real quick, because I've got it here. But I have eyesight in the ears, and so I might have to get perfectly viewed questions. That's so boring. And so, so, essentially, I have a lot of battery storage in solar facility. It sits on about two miles neighbors, and we use the best technology tier one suppliers for this equipment. From an interconnection perspective, we're designing the ECO transmission system, which is about one mile north of the project. We've already received unanimous approval from the land site here and the corporation conditions of all those facilities. We've already helped open houses in the community and met with residents about those facilities previously. The project is one hundred percent on private land. Unlike most developers who, who might try to enter an option agreement, we've already purchased nineteen hundred acres of the land. We're in a contract for about four hundred acres more. And we're doing this one hundred percent on private land. There's no state or federal land involvement. And our estimated personal operations date is November seventh, two thousand and twenty-six. Next slide. From, I talked about the visual resources. You've probably already read the staff report and looked at some of them, but let me just talk about, you know, again, if you just notice what this project is, it's south of the playa. It's a very remote area. It's at the ends of Kimsey Road. It's, we took and went out and just set up eleven visual simulations. You can't see the project, none of them. I'll show you kind of four of the advantage points, but when we do simulations like this and we see that it's not visible from really sun sites or the Wilcox Wildlife viewing area, or even when you're miles north from the facility where there's a, where there's buildings, some potential residences up there, you can't see it. You'll see that just about. Next slide, please. That's a big consideration for us. We want to make sure these projects look right in the community. So, here, the first observation point is one mile to north of the project. You can see the before and after facility. There's vegetation that's in the way. We can zoom in on this, and I can show you over the road. You can barely make it out. But you can't seal, see this from, from the north. Next slide, please. The next observation point that I've selected for you here today is an observation point number nine. It's down at the sun site facility. It's about a mile and a half, two miles from the location. Again, the before and after photos, and again, we use Westland, perhaps introduce my colleagues from Westland. Trying to make this good for you. They do a lot of environmental prepared work for ECO and other utilities in Cochise County, and they've done the simulations on our behalf and the wildlife facilities. Next slide, please. The next one I've selected for you is the wildlife viewing station. They're Apache, right adjacent to Apache Dinner Station. That's station number eleven there, right adjacent to the playa. And, and as you can see, there's so much vegetation there at the viewing station. When you look in the direction of our project, you just, you just can't see anything. The next interesting point, and it's not like they're all without the impact. When we get to viewing station number six, we do have a resident that is adjacent to us, and this is what the impact looks like to that visitor. But by and large, there are not residents. It's how we made efforts to be really thoughtful in how we cited this, and hopefully that's reflected in what you see here today. Next slide. Let's talk about our commitment to conservation. From a wildlife perspective, we are really serious about making sure we minimize impacts to wildlife. For weapons, there are no weapons on the project site. There is a water feature that runs through the project, which I'll talk about in a moment. We've already engaged the Army Corps, and we're going to make sure that we comply with all federal regulations. There are cultural resources, no known cultural resources on the project site. And from a water usage perspective, it should use less than one hundred and fifty thousand gallons a year. When you look at the farming water resources, there's a proper water resource. If you do the calculation, that's less than seven residences. We have five to seven residences a year. During the construction, we do need to mitigate dust and deperfection, so less water there. We would pull that from an onsite water well that we would install for that purpose. But it would be about fifty eight feet a month for the construction period. Conservation numbers, we've met multiple times with AMF already, and, and they asked us to incorporate a number of mitigation measures, which we have adopted. The first is to put ultraviolet light transmitters on the transmission line. The same old cranes really are not attracted to solar panels. We have Dr. Joel Diamond, who's biologist here, who can speak to that today. But from a transmission line perspective, they can strike the transmission line. And so AMF has asked us to put ultraviolet light on the mic. Helps the birds see the lines at night. We agreed to do that. We're also putting visual, what they call, it's birds on the lines during the daytime. They reflect sunlight. Again, they help the birds draw attention to this, so they can avoid it. And it cuts down median mortality ninety-eight percent. We will use anti-reflective coatings. We, of course, worked with Ms. McLaughlin on that and committed to doing that. We will do pre-construction surveys for owls, for burrowing owls, migratory birds. There is other species also that are included in that. Kit fox is another species that we committed to. We will incorporate wildlife friendly fencing. You can see on the west side of the project here, there is a kind of a waterway corridor. AMF has asked us if we could set that aside. We have set that aside, and coming up on the time impacts, so I'll move on. But we're also partnering with a group called Liberty Wildlife to make sure that we manage any impacts to wildlife. My colleague, Mira Satcha, who's, I think, one of the best in the industry on the community. Go ahead. If you want to cut me off. Okay. I'm so sorry.
Yes, you did.
Sir, she came out here many miles to speak to today.
I'm sure. I should speak to you once we get charged.
You bet.
You can stand by. I love some poetry.
So, go with that piece out?
Yes.
You bet.
Public hearing is now declared open. It is time for comments in the floor or against. About persons, it's during the noon. Um, chairman, I'd like to speak. Her house has a question. Has she filled out a form?
Have you? No, I didn't. So, if you could do that before you leave.
I will.
Okay.
Well, if you have the answer, I'm sure, oh, sorry. I'm so pleased to capture your remarks. State your name and address. Don't forget to fill out that form in Hotter Town. My name is Candy Henderson, and I live at nine zero eight four Star Mitchell. I believe I haven't been there very long, so I don't know. But I would, I'm interested to know what wildlife friendly fence looks like. Do you have a picture of one?
So, business design with?
Really should not be interacted with at this point. I'm sorry. You posed your question? Okay, can you, we might get around to answering. Okay. So, I, so I have several questions. That's one of them. The other one is, is this company owned by, does its headquarters in Arizona or in Cochise County? That's another question I've had. And how many jobs will it give to the people in Cochise County? That's another one. I was writing, as I was thinking of all these, I had no intention of speaking. I was just going to come watch to this, to see what she does. And then I have, I mean, there are the mountains here are full of wildlife. I have so much wildlife on my land. And I oppose this operation because letting it directly on my land and I oppose this operation because letting it directly affects our wildlife and there's a lot of people that would make a living off of the wildlife, the people that come to enjoy the wildlife that's in the cherry of the mountains. And but on the other side, I've been trying to get solar in my house for a year and I've been able to get anybody to come out, so, but I oppose this and so there's at least an independent study of the effects of the wildlife, then I can give you an organization that probably has nothing to do with that, that, okay, that's. Thank you for sharing. Is there anyone online that wishes to speak on this item?
We have one person online, Huan Kwan, who says hand raise. Okay. If you could state your name and address?
Yes, my name is Huan Kwan and I live close to the playa, I believe I'm about six miles away from this development site. And my address is at 4747 South Santa Claus Lane in the Walco's area. I would like to speak in opposition to this project, not because I am not for progress or renewable energy, but I believe that not enough study and proof has been given as to the protection of the wildlife, the aesthetics of the area, as well as the economic impact. It is a very large development and it is very well thought out except for these three areas. And I would like to oppose the building, the approval of this site in this particular way because of its size, as far as the duration of the project and because of the size, the environmental impact in the area during this period has to factor in the disposal, the maintenance. Where does, where do the panels go when hailstorms hit, when birds may damage them and they need to be replaced or at the end of its life, the panels need to be removed or replaced or if the business ramps down. For any and all of these reasons, do these go to the landfill? I have not seen in the proposal the mitigation for the effect on the pollution on the water supply and the environment in the disposal and in the maintenance of these panels. So I would like to request that the board look at these, this issue seriously rather than just the positive economic impact, which is great, but also that economic impact I would like to address next, in that in bringing in a new business, and let's say that this is the second that is to be approved, what if there are 100 of these projects? Cochise can house 1,000 of these projects, they do not necessarily use up a lot of water supply, they could litter the land, is this what we want for our county? To generate energy for the rest of Arizona or our neighbors? While energy is important, the aesthetic, the people who do live here, the people who do come here to enjoy the beauty and to develop the area in some other ways, the economic impact and the aesthetic impact are integrated into each other and needs to be, they both need to be considered in tandem. And with respect to the existing businesses that are thriving off of the ecotourism and that is a part of the community here, and how does it affect that for them? So that's the second issue. And this particular area as the final point, it is a, an area right in the middle of a recognized birding area, a wildlife area, right in the migration path of the sandhill crane and other wildlife. It is at the bottom of the drainage where water collects and not enough economic, not enough studies have been done to really ensure that it does not damage those particular wildlife. And specifically in the spacing of the panel, I'm glad that thoughts have been put into that, but it is not certain that the spacing itself will ensure that there's not that lake effect. It is assumed and it is plausible, but more study and more assurance need to be given that we don't wipe out the wildlife that is there and in the increasing possibility that more of these sites could be installed, that we need to think about it now rather than afterwards and setting a precedence that opened up Cochise County for much greater installation of solar panels, which I do not believe is entirely desirable. And in certain mitigation in certain areas, it is entirely productive and desirable. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kwan, calling again. This is the time for the applicants for a follow.
I'm sorry, we have one other person online that wishes to speak.
I have the other one.
Mr. Bob Anderson?
Mr. Anderson, what is your address and you have five minutes?
He is not muted, but Mr. Anderson, if he can hear us, we cannot hear you right now.
Mr. Anderson, one last thought? If we will move on?
Is there anyone else online that wishes to speak on this item? If so, raise your hand. I do not see any.
Thank you. Mr. Charles, you have a five minutes, are you keen to address those?
Absolutely. Can I cue the final slide please? We're going to speak to the economic impact first and then we'll address the questions. So these, hold up the slide please. So these, these projects have a lot of, a lot of positive economic benefits. You know, the first is $250 million total economic activity in Cochise County, since the study, then we hired a colleague, associates, they're a very well respected economic development study firm. And from a Cochise County perspective, then we contribute $34 million in fiscal impact and tax revenues, $15 million to schools, I'm a former high school teacher, I really care a lot about that, $18 million to Cochise County. We just met with earlier yesterday with this, you know, of, of, of the local hospital talking about how important a project like this is to the local community and how it really would help with their funding and the, the kind of market taxes that something would bring in. And so, there are three of construction jobs over 15 to 18 month period. We just went out with an RFP for the project to the, I mentioned in Powell County, that this guy has five full-time jobs on the site and just in general, the, you know, this is again, we've situated this on private land and we've been really thoughtful about how we, how we cited, I wanted to know about some of the concerns related to decommissioning. We will always take out a whole decommissioning bond on the projects to make sure that everything is disposed of properly, number one. For the project in Powell County, we're working with the, the veterans, the goal natural restoration, come and salvage the plants, actually take the plants, sort of native plants out of the project and put them in burn scarred areas, it's a really, really wonderful program. The panels themselves, 95% of the materials get recycled and I think, I don't know if there's any others who do that, it's Satcha, my colleague, Merida Satcha? Okay. So I'm trying to get through the five minutes quickly. I think one other thing I want to talk about is, well, in the day and rain time, is that Bob and I have a strong enough still? I would like to talk about what we do for community engagement. In fact, I'm going to head over to the Satcha to talk about how we approached that.
I'm going to go to the previous slide. Great. One of the things, just to quickly introduce myself, I'm Vice President of Communications at Bright Knight, working the utility and rural energy space for 15 years. My whole career has been based off of making sure that folks in the community have a chance to learn about our projects, provide feedback and I work with our engineers, developing to make sure those concerns are addressed. We oftentimes adjust our design, we engage the community differently, we establish partnerships, we engage in groups like Eric mentioned with natural restoration, but we're taking salvage plants and planting them in the gardens of the playa or we establish ourselves with a group like Village Wildlife, so they can advise on best practices around wildlife conservation. But none of that matters unless everyone has a chance to learn about it, learn about the benefits, have an opportunity to be part of the work and feedback loop. And I will go through every little point here, although I would love to bore you all with our conversation around this work, but we really raise the bar on what it means to make sure that everyone in our project region is aware of the information and in my notes, speaking, if you, if you were curious, we looked at, you know, the 120,000 residents in Cochise County, you know, 70% of those folks are on social media, we advertise on social media, we draw, drove traffic to our project webpage where line number is listed, sales number is listed and we track that engagement to make sure that we have comprehensive education up to the public, um, to share that information and get their feedback. So I see that mine, like, so, and if there's any questions around the feedback that we received or the saturation of that information?
Is there anyone else online to be getting Mr. Anderson back in? The loudspeaker, the public hearing closed, this is the time for commission discussion, if you have questions, there are questions, or the staff. Next one for the conference. Still online?
So I think I do do some, my own research on this and specifically regarding fires and the more popular these solar projects they develop, the more developed the opportunity for fire just from shared members? What steps is your company taking to mitigate the risks of fire on this project?
Great question, I mean, part of this is just really, we sense the coordination with the, with the local fire departments and so we always reach out and make sure that we review, for example, the road circulation plan and the buffers and so within the permanent review cycle, there's always the fireworks, we will sign off in their, in their buffer period, the buffer zones that are placed typically, and we have an interest in doing that as well. We don't want, fortunately, there's a national census for us to do that because we don't want a wildfire that could be spreading independently through the area to reach our project, which is many millions of dollars investment. And so part is just making sure that we have an emergency response plan that has been reviewed, there's been proper training, what we, what we do is we, we conduct training with the local first responders and then we video record that and make sure that that's made available and then we have that training to be on that. So those are, those are really the procedures and, and that are taking place. And of course, the state of the art is, is always getting better, there are really just not a lot of fires that are caused by solar plants. If we, we looked into it, yeah, I mean, you probably heard more of it with, with maybe some residential installations that are, there's lots of groups that are installing, but for the large utilities here, so, and so I'm not aware of the projects where the fires cost by solar panels.
I believe the largest, the largest one in the state of the art is almost months.
I say hours?
Well, we did, then, but we're a fire, what remediation, what steps would you take to actuate, clean, including waters, water, land?
Oh, and they start understanding, what, what steps would we take afterwards?
Afterwards? Of course, we were damaged, full ourselves.
Yeah, so what happens then is they're typically, yeah, they're treated, you know, it really depends kind of what has happened, but we would, we would dispose of them according to all laws and regulations depending on, you know, on that, again, as I mentioned before, the, that's what fire does, the materials, but I mean, panels are about 95% recycled, some are 100% recycled depending on the manufacturer that you're using.
Oh, thank you, my last.
Our solar, for example, is a local company here, they're based, you probably, you may know them, but they, they recycle and they take back the panels and they recycle everything.
My last question, can you explain the source of funding for decommissioning?
Yes, we take out lawns and so we're doing this right now for our box community projects is we first of all hire an engineer and we hire, take consultative engineers, prepare a decommissioning study. And then on the basis of that study, the engineer prepares, they're registered professional engineer, they prepare a study of what it would cost in each year of the decommissioning and then once that's done, they're typically reviewed with the county, the county can review and inspect it and make requests for changes. And then that lawn is placed in place, physically placed with a, you know, typically an A rated or better upon a entity to cover the life of the project so that if for some reason we went away and we didn't fulfill that obligation, there are other financial resources available to, to decommission the plant in accordance with the decommissioning plan that is also reviewed by the county.
Thank you.
My question.
I have a question on mortgages during construction, I saw bid to eat, was that for the total project or was that, that happened separate month?
It is per month.
It is per month, 15 months or whatever. The most asked was, does the?
It is that same question, a little bit water for deperfection, but it's really dust mitigation, it's probably a pretty conservative number, I can't be surprised if it ends up having half that, but we always want to overpromise under, remember, right for a white one? Excuse me? Right for a white one?
Did have a couple of questions. And that picture is one of them, maybe not in the correct order for me, but would it be possible to jump back to page eight of the presentation? Okay, I am familiar with the geography there, but almost all to the west of Long Island, so I'm not really, you know, up to speed on the other side. And back to the picture you just had, page, is it 14? Yeah. Could you describe to me at least?
Yeah, so it's, you know, this guy is shrugging land out here. Um, you see, yeah, and you're looking at the property, that's, you know, it's mesquite and grasses out there, it's not super high quality, you just see some agriculture, if you went back to one of the other photographs, you can see the agriculture that's kind of off the beach something with us, but there's a rancher who has branched out of the property for a number of years that we purchased this, that someone went from and he's still under a leasing agreement, doing ranching out there, but it's mesquite and kind of shrugging grasses, those kinds of things.
But that, that intersection, which by, yeah, good. You had a very good point and answered half a dozen of my questions. Perhaps, let's call it summary of the project, then this, can you give us a summary? And possibly you get a copy of that?
Absolutely. In fact, Ms. McLaughlin has it, so the county already has it, and I can send it to you or send an action motion table or you?
I can, I can get it to you.
Thank you.
Those are some of the common questions that we get.
Yeah, we have a copy of that economic impact study report, we should, we'd be happy to make that available to you as well.
Looking at grass, more of a primitive jobs on this project, there's some dollar amounts for other applications and you 100% private land and slightly to minimize and knowing that this is, I would be able to give you. Okay. Well, maybe a peripheral effort, we get this quite often here at the commission, Cochise County. We get this quite often here at the commission, which is down here. And it's like this, you know, I mean, I am imagining, not foreseeing, but imagining this time when we might pass the, wait, that's about enough, that's all we can handle. And I'm wondering when that might come along. With that in mind, sir, just from my own knowledge, how long have you guys been working on this project?
Yes, we have worked on this project for about three years. Now, do you think that's about common or average? Yeah, a project like this will take three to five years. Sometimes it's eight years, and it's just, it's kind of hard to know when, when maybe ultimately it's when a buyer suddenly decides, that means it's very excited, and it's kind of hard to predict that sometimes. Sometimes the project you think is running or bad takes longer, and then suddenly you can be surprised. It's something for a while, and we're nodding and agreeing over there. Perhaps if you're not in the night inning, you might be in the sixth or seventh right now, so. But there might be an end to this eventually. Okay.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, okay, thanks, thank you for that. Your, many of my questions are answered on that page right there. So if I can get copies, I think it would be a good shit. Absolutely, and that's, that's, that's good for me, thank you very much.
My pleasure.
Because I next thing. I did, go to sheet eight, okay, Jake? The, what is the center square that's shown there as you're lighting?
Yeah, so in the middle, it's certainly, yeah, there's big, they're getting some spot in the middle there. Yeah, but it's a great question. And so in the middle there, there is a, there was a property that has been kind of just carpeted pretty fine. There's, let's see carpet, there's probably 15, 20 different landowners. One of the gentlemen who, who Ms. LaCrosse referred to actually wrote a letter of support. We have, it's a way you have that many kind of small, really small landowners, very difficult to kind of track them down and negotiate, you know, the land agreements. Having said that, and I'm anticipating your question, there's a couple of things. Number one, we absolutely make sure that we have ample access to those landowners. We would cure for that in the commercial bargaining process. And then to be said that, you know, someone felt landlocked and they wanted to divide a minute, then we absolutely could divide for market price. That's how we would address, you know, any issues that he might have or a man might have on some property. But there are no residents in there in the middle. Yeah.
Just, just a, it's visualized.
They're, they're very, very small lots. Yeah, a number of them are.
And the question is, I don't want to understand what you're saying about your red light and protecting frames?
Yeah, we have a slide on that, we had prepared, so let's go to the appendix slides. Yes. So within the project boundaries, we have to collect, they call it a medium voltage house. And so the collection system is really sort of down low and not really visible if you're outside of the project. And so the collection system you can see in the photographs that's attached. And so first of all, this way, this is what it looks like. It's not, it's not overhead power lines, so we, that's not how you collect what we call a medium voltage part of the project. If you have solar panels, then you have to kind of tie them all together, you know, in a medium voltage collection system. And then they get stepped into a transmission level voltage. And so we would have an overhead transmission line, be about a mile and a half. The medium voltage collection system would look like what you see here today. And it's collected by randomly for two reasons. First is to minimize ground disturbance, ground impacts. And then second, it's just, it's much better, it's much safer. If there's ever a maintenance issue that's required, it's just more safe for the workers to approach the line like this when they can see everything that's going on versus what it's there.
What about the overhead line? We, we, the guy doing this?
Yes, there is overhead line, and if we go back to, I think, slide probably three, that has kind of the overview side plan, right there, hold on one more. There you go. So it's drawn in yellow, and that's, that's going to be a standard transmission line. And it will have steel block full structures, be about 80 feet tall. It'll be converting cables, and you have to have that stuff overhead power line. I think we're students right way, and it'd be safe. But it's going to the existing line, it's going to science the existing transmission line that's spread. So we go up there a mile and a half, we've managed to get it go, so we're 13k transmission system. I have another question.
Stephen Saunders?
Yes. Mr. Ellis, I want to compliment you on an excellent powerful presentation. Really describes what your goals and objectives are. I have a comment or question is, it doesn't show where you see that this is a very fragile, balanced area in terms of wildlife, plants, animals, you know. It clearly shows that you can hide the project from a distance, but you cannot hide that from a wild, definitely. It doesn't show all your 2,400 acres of town country and bringing in solar panels. Coaches County is known for its gardens, and has grazing land. Every time we see a project like this, it's taking grazing land, public mission, missing the panels, panels that have negative impacts, I mean, the aviation and wildlife impacts are very serious. There's, I don't, I can't see where the economic return is going to be. You know, at general level, foundations, trust, all that, but the average people that live there that enjoy this, that make a living, bird watchers and residents, there's no economic impact that's positive for them. So the other question I have is, I've listened to half a dozen of these persons. Where does the energy go? It doesn't stay in, you're simply mining our energy. What is the transmission line that can go somewhere else? And it doesn't benefit us. So the average person, the question I get on is, hey, my property values are going to go downhill. Nobody wants to live next to a chrome field of panels. So it has an impact, a negative impact on the rural development of the area. And there is some development going on around this area from there to 191 and up. That's seven of them. I just don't see the benefits that if you want to reduce the impacts on wildlife, the economic impacts, the negative impacts in the area, it would be likely, and that it would be worth your while to go looking for an area that doesn't have sensitive bird corridor, that doesn't bring in hundreds and thousands of people that live in birds and all that. And they all say the same thing, this is my point. So I don't know how you plan to deal with that.
Yeah. Well, you know, we started off with an effect document, I don't really give more comments, you have a bunch of questions, it's a lot. Hopefully take it one more. I forgot, very first question, so.
If I was sitting down, that would be, I'm here, to try to prevent the adventure.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So when it comes to wildlife, we brought our biologist, Dr. Tullman, I'd like to talk to you directly about the impact here. Because he's probably the expert, and I would do a little bit of injustice.
A little bit?
Yeah, so we'll, I'm going to ask you about that, and we'll, we'll deal with that first, and then, and then you took a couple of things.
Okay.
I'm old diamond, 4030 West Hattaway Street, Tucson. Been about 25 years in the world, we've been there for about 15. As far as siding was up to game and fish on several occasions, game and fish said later, they say, hey, how are you dealing with connectivity? How are you dealing with avian mortality, you know, lake effect? How are you dealing with wilds on the bottom of fence? We sat down, we went through, a lot of these designs are based on game and fish. Number one, cranes. Cranes and solar panels, there's no detected mortality of a crane as solar panels, just the way that cranes behave. A crane comes into the lane, comes in feet first and slow. So direct panel mortality is, there's no evidence of it. Or cranes, you do have crane mortality associated with the gen. When cranes are on roost, cranes roost in water, because they're out in the water, it keeps the predators from coming and evaporating their eggs, killing babies. So most crane mortality happens at night, when a coyote gets into those roosting cranes, cranes jump, they find a power line, they can't see that, so you're mortality. There's a study in Nebraska that they have high mortality from cranes, very similar to the woke obsolete crane population. They attach the UV emitter to these, so that it makes the gen lines visible at night. So when those cranes jump now, they can see the position of that, of that line, they had a decrease of 98% mortality. So crane mortality, crane impact is, is pretty well managed. Our discussion with game and fish, game and fish recommended this methodology be adopted. Spacing of the solar panels, anti-reflective glare, those are all things that mitigate an effect called lake. Lake effect is a, is a theoretical approach that once, there's studies coming out now that indicate that they're not responding to solar panels, so it's open water. There are interactions to them, but it's not a flock, it's a flock of avian, of animals approaches a body in water. They come as a group, they circle as a group, and they're laying. That's not how they respond to solar systems. For solar facilities, this is based on a study of five solar facilities and two bodies of water in southern Arizona, or southern California. At solar facilities, they come in singles, so it's generally an erratic event. It's not a population coming in the site, it's single individuals coming, a generally slow cloud. We don't see that, we mitigated those effects by, with the ground cover ratios, spacing the solar panels out so you don't have a large mass that looks like a body of water, you have spaced out, you can also see the anti-reflective glare. So those are all game and fish recommendations that we adopt. Additionally, connectivity, this is an important connectivity area based on the Paul Byer model, which is a game and fish model that they, they reckon. We sat down with game and fish, we looked at the western edge of this, we saw 400 acres, we give it an open as connectivity. It's a non-fenced area, remain as is, remain as an important connectivity. So that's a connectivity zone for birds, for to rescue the birds. We also talked to game and fish about wildlife compatible fencing. Game and fish has a system of guidelines for wildlife compatible fencing based on the habitat you're in. We're in Summit as a grassland, their recommendation's there, or exclusion fence or ungulates, so you're trying to keep the larger deer out, and raise the base of the fence so you can get mesocarotid, so this is everything you can kick fox on dam and continue to move to its side. In addition, the retention of perennial vegetation, ash cracks along site, retains the wildlife value for these smaller bird organisms. So we have connectivity along the west side, we also have connectivity through the site for the smaller organisms. Pre-clearance surveys, we're doing pre-clearance surveys for box currents, kit fox. Burrowed ants, minus reverse, so basically we're doing a full clearance survey through the site prior to the disturbance. So those can be avoided or moved via game and fish guidelines. Burrowed ants will likely be out there, any burrowed ants detected will follow game and fish's burrowing out recommendation guidelines. Those burrowed ants will be moved temporarily out of the site during construction, they can reoccupy afterwards. So this, this site is designed with the help of game and fish to be as wildlife compatible as possible. So the gen type protection on these lines, the UV emitters and the visible, that is double the amount of mitigation measures of any other, any other power line adjacent to the road lines. We are committed to retaining wildlife value here and retaining connectivity. And we think our, our work with game and fish has really given us a good perspective on it. And we're ready to take their advice, and that's what these designs are based on. Another, another quick note here, we also looked into golden eagles. We talked to the Golden Eagle Raptor biologist at the state, and we looked for any nests within a 10 mile radius of the site. There are none, that's part of our siding. Additional siding methodology, this siding avoids any endangered species habitat, any moldy or new protected area. So the siding here, as an experienced biologist in Arizona, there's very few locations you can select in Arizona and not prevent endangered species habitat. This siding is directed to make sure we're avoiding that, those species that remain, that are designed to make it wildlife compatible as much as possible.
So your panels are not going to influence the habitat along the panel for reptiles, insects, those kinds of things, somebody did the biological assessment and turned it on.
So it's a biological evaluation of the states, we don't have any ESA, any ESA species. The impact of the shade has not been explored, but the retention of the perennial grasses under those panels, perennial shrubs under those paths, this portion of the habitat within the area will not be the same. So functionally what you have is you have organisms from kit fox below that can continue to use those habitats as acids. The shading effect of the panels will likely have that positive on earth, but that's, that's a portion.
And will be those panels.
You know, typically, what, have you had your fingertips? I want to say they're about three feet by, by 14, about a square yard, a little bit.
Very much, right. So you've got little hands, but it rains, and the water is directed to the lower fin of the panel, and it accumulates. A lot of the hydrology, a lot of the accelerated erosion that happens underneath those panels. How do you plan to handle that condition?
I can speak to that, I mean, that's just, we're obviously very interested in erosion as well, right? Because we have to, we have erosion, it's kind of E weight piles that are supporting the structure. We just erosion from the effect that you're talking about just totally is not something that affects the product. So we would get fancy if we were having a lot of erosion, we have to go on the piles. So what's after concern more with handling the runoff from, from other places. And do you want to, if I could, because you raised a few concerns, but also like, I want to make sure we deal with wildlife, but also want to make sure we adequately address some of the points you raised.
I have one more question regarding wildlife.
You bet.
Always want to go out there and monitor the impacts, and the birds that are crashing into the plant holes, the health of the wildlife issue, you need to have somebody there to come up with those evaluations.
Yeah.
And I think it would help your industry, especially reduce that information. A way that is found is with the regular people that live around.
Yeah, it's, it's actually me studying, and Dr. Diamond referred to that already, there's just not really a lot of toxin, you know, happens in, in, right? I'd like you and the, and the other members to consider that this is really a method of farming. If you look at how much energy, I mean, if we were to do it this way, I'm a big fan of lots of resources. We need lots of different kinds of resources in order to meet our energy needs, folks who suggest maybe double or triple. And so we really need to have a lot of resources, but if you were to do that out from solar, you would add about a percent to what we currently have for agriculture in this country. And I just want to, want to put it in context, we are farming some, we create a really valuable product. We make this product, we use this way less water than conventional resources. If you look at how much water power we, I mean, some are great yes, how very clear generation station uses, you got much water that Apache generation station uses, it's, it's a ton. In fact, we know that that goes out, you know, drilling new wells in order to, to fire those facilities. We run our projects, we generate energy, we lower the amount of energy used by these, these conventional resources and it lowers the water consumption in Arizona, that's fact. And so it's actually water conserving, it's very good for the environment to, to, to progress to have this clean energy, and it's just a different method of farming.
You're in that area that has those thousand plus feet dip. But well, the depths of that really most wilds, it's really gotten crazy out there. And you're right in general, or it's a thousand feet plus to get water. And so it's not going to be cheap, you know, to pick up water a thousand feet or more to do your.
Yeah, we, we've already sampled the ones here, we know that it's about 1,300, 1,500 feet at this location. We are putting in an 800 foot deep well at our other project, we're having, you know, up in the town, that must be expensive well. But I want to talk about, you asked, where's it that fit for the community, and a bunch of stuff's on end, yeah. You brought up the cattle and the ranch, I really would invite you to think about this as a, as a.
I really would invite me to think about this as a as a new form of agriculture. Uh if this was ranching operation, I'm not sure that we'd have four or five uh equivalent full-time employees. So I could ask Mr. Andrew Way, who's the cattle ranch that we bought it from, that maybe had four or five folks working full-time on this footprint. So the number of people working that facility is going up, but they're generally pretty good-paying jobs. The construction jobs are excellent. The thirty million that we're going to contribute to the the county uh and schools is no joke. Um it's significantly more than you would have in in personal property taxes and contributions that make the schools better and have more funding for police. And and unlike uh, so so because we don't pay a big head on services, we're not going to increase the need to bring the police, new hospitals, new schools, we're not adding a bunch of new people. But so if you look at the net net for the community, a bunch of money coming in, with very little impact on services, it's it's great, you know, as long as we we deal and we we sign responsibly. As long as we make sure that we're doing right by the community, that we're going to invest, we're going to support local organizations, we can talk about what we're doing up in, I mean, we're definitely talking about the lectures and solace fund that we're funding. Uh in fact, she had the supervisor serving and they're going to be funding added operations for project into now county. Um a solace to send uh the vocational school kids to to the high school to go uh become electricians. And we're paying for that, added operations proceeds will will really service about investing in creating a better one.
That's manual contribution.
Yes, that's what we're doing. And and not 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 here, I don't want to make any promises that about, talk about another project. This is our, this is what we do. And uh so we're we're doing that with this other project that's moving into operation and our essentially more about the media she had today, which provides you to set that project up.
I just have one more point I wanted to to make to sort of address the comment directly where you were really acting after accountability around impact to wildlife, the site. And you know, we touched briefly, you talked a pretty well about like our partnership with that entity. And I might have also mentioned that they are supporting uh every major energy provider in the state. And one of the uh two points that we discussed with them is funding additional uh research to help inform our industry. Um not to say that our work is merely well informed, which we've heard from our biologists this evening. And then um they've also to move into a partner during our online and operating maintenance phase project, where they can come out and consult um on building wildlife engagement project and make sure that our online operations and maintenance work is compliant with being respectful. But also just, you know, I was mentioning to Sir Al some moment ago is fundamentally, the objective of our project is to be a environmental improvement. So um we try to make sure that that contribution is in line with having as minimal an impact in the native flora and fauna. Uh and we already referenced the work at Fox County, we fully have another same word here. And as any species that do have to be removed um to the facility, the installation of our project, our hearts sit and then they planted, these ones are, which is here.
Regarding conservation, I suggest we get in touch with the local conservation districts. There's one in Wilcox, there's one in Douglas. And I think uh they're open to partnerships and that kind of thing, and that might help um your whole approach to this thing and improve your communities.
Well, I appreciate that recommendation, as we do, we really hate it while our areas suddenly using case fail though. Uh I want to give one more, so that's a great suggestion.
You have fun with the community score, I'm sure you saw the letter, but we met, they're saying with Jamie Blaski, uh who's the guy you mentioned earlier with the city Wilcox loves. See, we'll talk to the the letter that that book that uh uh your laws uh sent in. And uh talking about also our our post community engagement, uh we've gone both peacefully uh interested in economic development. Um we also met with the CDO, the family hospital, and she just uh just yesterday, she actually sent me the other morning saying she would send her request that she can't come down and her speaks directly about her support for the project. So.
Mr. Mark, do you have any questions? Uh Mr. Young?
Yes, I have a few. Okay, on the presentation here that we have up on the screen. Uh I I just pulled it up. That one gray area in the corner, I guess, is the northeast side, basically. And the other one, are those privately owned and not part of your project?
Yes, my, that's a goodness, I had said, my, we're too curious, I just had a personal security question. Uh uh would you have me insert?
Mr. Young? I believe he's he's asking about the two areas that are cut out uh from the project site. He's asking if those are also privately owned. Is that correct?
Correct.
I have a few questions, sorry.
He he wants more information, is that correct, Mr. Young?
Yes, I am.
About the parcels that are cut out from the project, there's the, yes, in the middle, and then the one a little bit on the side.
And I'm not sure I understand what information John is looking for. They're privately owned parcels, we we absolutely, that sense, um I think that was mentioned fifteen hundred feet. Actually, they sent notices to landowners within two months. And we did that twice, even though John told us we had to, we had two open houses. Um and we met with all the residents that, so and so we we've really tried to make sure that we we reach out to every neighbor and and provide information and introduce parts of interest in this.
So you currently don't own those parcels?
You do not own those parcels, he's asking.
We will be not own the parcels, that's correct, yeah. We own nineteen hundred acres, um which makes it a majority, but if you're looking at one hundred contract for forty more, we do not own the parcels.
Thank you. If you go to the uh the presentation where was K O P number nine?
So you can tell us something?
Yes, he asked me to go to the K O P point nine, which I now have on the screen.
Is that a private home, is that off of away from your acreage or away from this project or?
There is, yeah, there's a home in the foreground, and if you can see the bottom left, there's the nine on the slide.
And it's on the vision, yeah, so the very left hand corner of the bottom picture, you'll see a color vision uh that uh that reflects how the picture was taken. And so that house would be uh between the photographer and the solar project.
Thank you. Can you forward another slide or two, please? Uh, one more? Another couple then, maybe it was the last slide. One more. The last slide with, that had different gray areas within the project.
This one?
This one right here. So all those gray areas within the project are still privately owned?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Swell, two hundred questions?
I do not, they have all been answered.
Thank you, Mr. Mark.
Yes, thanks, uh good you. Um I have to think, there's been some really good questions from the commissioner and a bunch of excellent answers. And I have to agree, this is a very good presentation. This is impressive. With that in mind, uh Bible report, is that something that I can obtain or read? Uh can you directly somewhere to find that? That's a good question.
Yeah, that's a good problem, copy it and okay.
So it's.
We already got it, we'll make sure that they.
Okay.
Sir Ross?
Yes.
So if you go, I think, second to the last slide, I was saying that fire concerns, this project has more equipment, more low voltage wires than I think we've seen in these projects. You do not put the low voltage wires underneath the air holes and the electric machines?
Uh we have, I mean, extra eighty six are here, that's fantastic. Um we're missing a question, we made it to this ticket, so we must see who's still there. And and we're not creating that, that's the, that's the second, the next one. And then we suppose. So there's a, and maybe it's, like, this, this game is being played in the east.
I'm sorry, whoever is on line that has been on mute, if you could please mute.
Uh yes, my name is Charlie Oaks, and I am the owner of.
Right now, we're having a commission discussion, yeah, if you could please mute and we'll call you in in a moment.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry, can you repeat the question?
Um, the social uses that we've proved previously, I've seen these lines, um fire is just a large concern in this county. Have we had all those lines there in the previous projects?
Yeah, I I don't believe, sometimes they are in conduit.
As far as our building official.
Um so again, you know, sometimes they are in conduit to protect them from damage. But again, I, you know, this might be something we we would look at to see if that's going to be acceptable per code. But a lot of times, exterior wiring would be in conduit to protect it from damage.
See. I just know that you have, oh, it's kind of, yeah. Fire, here.
Yeah, I understood, I mean, I can't say this, we have, we, when we design these projects, we take many former vendors who are putting, they're literally like hundreds of millions sold us this project. And they are the most conservative people you can possibly imagine on the planet because they're the ones that when a product problem happens, um they're very last to receive. Everybody's affected before the lenders. And so uh so we will not get through any kind of product side, we, if we had a, or if we had any kind of fire risk, they don't wear that bridge. And so we are, we are one hundred percent centered as the owner of the product. Again, we're not going to be flipping this to somebody else, we're going to own it. And then we have over our shoulder, the lenders, lenders hire the best engineers in the world to review our design um to make sure that it doesn't have any kind of problems that you're talking about. I can see, Doc, as I understand it, I do understand the concern. And it's not going to be a visual because you're not going to see it outside, and you have every incentive to do it right and to have that not be a problem.
I I have one more question. I read somewhere, I wrote it down in my notes, I don't know where it was, investigation in quotes. An alternative could be the project to sell energy from manufacturer located directly on site.
I think that's one, that's one one. All right, okay, so yeah, it's from the, it's from the, I'm next to her, I want to make sure I understand the the context. And so um let me talk about our projects up in Penale County, because that's where we actually have a buyer, and I would survey and answer your quick question. So our project in Penale County, uh our person, our buyer there is this South municipal power agency. They are consorting with twenty-five Arisawa-based uh municipalities and electrical districts, uh all in power, right, there is being consumed in the state of Arizona, and it's all utilities. We um when we develop a project like this, um there are, there are increasingly manufacturers that are looking to produce their product with clean energy. We get express presence of interest um from time to time. And so there is certainly the possibility, absolutely no guarantee, but that a manufacturer would want to set up shop right next to us so that they can say that they're making whatever product it is that they're making with clean energy. And so in terms of who might actually buy the energy, uh we would sell it maybe to a commercial entity. Utilities really uh are the first and and most likely choice, but there are also other competition buyers, which is the answer to your question.
I read the word manufacturer, yeah, concerned, you know, it's something by rights on the side that is just.
The good news there is you're the planning committee commission, and we would hash them back uh for people in front of you, well, this, you have to, if we're doing any action against that for especially this facility, and you would be able to review that.
So I have a quick justice speaker from the Smirpy or Echo. And if the commission has an objection, I want to be sure, if somebody's got a new scrap, we give you two minutes, and I'll send you one of those.
We also have one more speaker online, if you wish, uh he's a property owner uh in the area.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, my name is Teresa Murphy, and I have this is one of the three hazards in the city, and we're in the man services administrator for Apple. And just a really quick question from Friday is if you have a um this energy connect with Apple.
We do know.
Thank you.
Thank you, I have some information online, if we have. Is it Mr. Mark?
Uh it is Mr. Oaks, I believe. Mr. Oaks, are you able to hear us and unmute yourself?
Mr. Oaks? Time for public comment, really has to ask, I think we're all for it. Is there any other questions from the commission? Online, Ms. Swell, Mr. Young, anything else before we close the session?
I cannot have any other.
Nothing from me.
I have one more question. I'm surprised. I don't have a counter that, you don't have an energy connection agreement with Apple. What if they don't give you that?
So the interaction agreement is a, is a standard part of 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 every project. And so when you um when you design a development project like this, you have to file an order interaction, uh and then you go through a multi-stage uh study process. And and so um yeah, that's just a very, very standard procedure uh in the industry. And so um we started that process, we then built back in two thousand, I think it was two thousand, two thousand nineteen, so it wasn't, and I was working with that along the interaction really it takes many, many years to go through this, so it's, it's a very common, um it's a very common uh process that we're going to be about to the same process with all of our projects, this is about a smaller thing that has, it takes many years to go through the study process. So um it's just, but it is not something that is always viewed, it isn't a lot. Yeah, that's correct. Yeah, and so yeah, with respect to Echo, yeah, we we started that process, we then go back in two thousand nineteen. We are still working on, we've been on that.
Else? Long now for the planning, for your summary and recommendations, welcome please.
Thank you. Planning does recommend conditional approval. If the commission wishes to grant approval, staff recommends the following conditions. The project owner shall submit an advance or concord with their first commercial permit at traffic improvement maintenance plan, which successfully mitigates project impacts to Kimsey and Anderson Road to the satisfaction of the county. The plan shall include but not be limited to a traffic control plan, dust control plan, road stabilization plan, and road maintenance plan. Condition two, the project owner shall apply a chemical stabilizer such as magnesium chloride to Kimsey Road from Kansas Settlement Road to the western project limits. No fewer than four times per year during the project construction phase, road preparation application shall follow best practices to improve product performance and shall be incorporated with the manufacturer's specifications. Condition three, pursuant to eighteen twenty-four zero three of the zoning regulations, which mandates wildlife-friendly fencing, the applicant shall reserve no less than a four inch gap between the ground surface and the bottom of the perimeter fencing. Um I will mention, in the last two special use requests, we have requested a six to eight inch gap. This was requested specifically by this applicant. This was requested specifically by this applicant to to lower that to four inches. And you, you heard from the biologist and defensive that recommendation. Uh, condition four, the project owner shall maintain the project site with perennial vegetated ground cover and non-compacted soil. Where grading is not required during project construction, any existing vegetation will be mowed rather than removed completely. Condition five, the project owner shall exclusively use PV panels with anti-reflectivity coating that is integral to the panel. Condition six, the project owner shall submit an emergency response plan in conjunction with building permits, mittles for county and fire responder review and approval. Condition seven, the project owner shall submit a instruction waste disposal plan in conjunction with building permits, mittles for county review and approval. To reduce the optical illusion of water that closely spaced panels can create, all solar racks shall be installed to maintain no less than a twelve-foot minimum clear distance measured from outer edge of panels. Between all tracker rows north-south, the applicant should not exceed a thirty-five percent ground cover ratio defined as panel area to total project area for the project site. Condition nine, the project owner shall include all VMPs listed as part of note for note ten of their application for dust mitigation on their stormwater pollution prevention plan. Condition ten, the area indicated as wildlife linkage on the concept plan shall remain free of any core project elements subject to the special use, including solar modules, batteries, inverters, transformers, and security fencing. Condition eleven, the commission grants a waiver from zoning reg eighteen twenty-five zero-three G, which mandates that all onsite utility and transmission lines, including power and communication lines running between banks of solar panels to nearby electric substations or interconnections with buildings shall be buried underground to the maximum extent feasible. Power and communication lines between the project and the point of interconnection with the transmission system may be overhead. And just, oops, sorry. Condition twelve, the commission grants a waiver from zoning reg eighteen twenty-four zero-three, which is a setback required to internal parcel boundaries. Instead, minimum setbacks of forty feet shall only be applied to the exterior boundaries of the project as indicated by the concept plan. Standard conditions related to substance of conditions permitting timeframes modifications apply and have not been modified by this request. That concludes my presentation. I'm available for additional questions and there is a sample motion on the slide for the commission's consideration.
Okay, uh, Mr. McCallum, we do care for the the item that we discussed this morning.
Yes.
Okay, thank you for your address.
Now, the question, please.
For the, for the sake of the.
Mr. Harske.
I know you brought Docket SU twenty-three seventeen with the conditions of approval recommended by the staff. The waiver request requested by the applicant, factor of approval are the constant, you're applying to the fact.
Thank you, second please.
I will second that.
Thank you, Mr. Montgomery. Is there any further discussion?
Sure.
Mr. Love.
The brief appointment statement. Uh, according to the Arizona State Department, this project is not likely to affect sensible Florida bond and will not supply in Gertie's site area. But as I said, no one knows definitively the full impact this may have on the area, have a chance to show us too late. Many migratory versions of the sensitive species are within a few miles of this proposed solar field. Such a large-scale project that may completely impact wings of the wild cats being popular, molting on annual breeding festival bringing tens of thousands of visitors entering tremendous threatening to the wild cats and local communities throughout southern Arizona. Curiously, curiously, this is another proof, solar projects were now generating about six thousand acres of solar fields adjacent to the wild cats farm. Secondly, hailstorms and lightning strikes are common occurrences during monsoon season. I did find meteorologists identifying the reality of fire among solar energy power plants. When asked about the long-term effects of fires, pretty, in the form of toxic metals and pollutants released into the environment, most solar experts replied, quote, "We don't know title jump, anything." What will be the long-term effects of the fire that spontaneously erupts from battery cells or rivers? Or a gross fire that consumes the vast group of solar panels? What will be the long-term effects on marine waterway and on humans? I don't know, but I do have concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Love. Anyone else wants to say? Here we go. Fall for the questions. Mr. Montgomery.
Thank you. I've had several questions and concerns coming in today. They have all been addressed and answered satisfactorily to me. And I guess we'll go with that.
Thank you, Mr. Love.
No. In my opinion, the Arizona State Department realizes the potential harm to sensitive species in the around the wild cats flying area. Secondly, I have concerns with the real risk of fire and the results in long-term environmental toxicity such a project could produce. And for these reasons, I cannot support this project at this time.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Watkins.
Hi.
Mr. Young.
Nay. I have concerns about the, uh, current property owners within this development.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Gonzalez.
Nay. I'm still concerned with the negative impacts and the humidity overall. Aviation, wildlife habitat, it could have been condition that will create. So I will answer this, nay, responsible.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Mr. Harske.
Nay.
Sir.
Nay.
Thank you. Mr. Sanders.
Yes. Aye.
Ms. Welch.
Aye.
Thank you. These solar fields strain my patience. I feel like they're creating solar armpit on Pushes County. I will go back tonight, uh, my patience is waiting, um, thank you for your patience tonight. Aye. Motion carries.
Do you think the motion is to repeat?
Yes. Six, ayes. Three, nay. An individual disagreeing with this action has the right to appeal to the court supervising within fifteen days. An application for appeal is available on the clerk at the office, maybe through five Friday each time or online at kuchis dot ac dot co. Thank you, congratulations. Thank you, Charlie. We can take a break. So the people can prepare. You're hearing this.
Maybe to the guy. Yeah, that's freaking me out.
I got sick. What'd you get?
Because I was listening. It's like, it's like, they're reading your name, so.
So.
Yes, oh, and Mr. Gonzalez.
Involved.
Yeah, they got in touch.
Yeah.
Yeah, all the, yeah, it's like sometimes about the neighbors, seriously, the person that's the neighbor. Uh, and he was serious, he was amazing. They don't do that, it's basically. For the sixteen thousand. I'm like, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't. It's like, I should tell you that.
Oh.
I don't see that in the case of, yeah. Take the space.
That's my job, I gotta be sure. Be sure I answer any questions, thank you.
Thank you very much. Congratulations.
Is that what I'm saying?
Go.
Yeah, you're doing great, buddy.
You got one hour.
It wasn't a little longer, I thought.
I think it was thinking.
Maybe you did question. So it's funny to say Teresa Murphy.
Yeah, about that.
Just say it's Thursday. It's a tough crowd. Freaking, we got a tall. It's my own district, my two. Today, we're just. Doing a good job.
Yeah, this is.
This is a really.
Got to keep going and. Yeah, we're thinking we won't have a meeting until.
Why?
Just a brief. Lighter. Um, we are, actually, we have a new senior planner, sorry.
Oh, sorry, I should have got, what's this guy's name?
Uh, this is Paul Sparza.
Okay.
He's, he's just helping me out. He's actually a planner, but he's our building at this work.
Two months, I've been getting his name all the time.
Yeah.
I didn't know that was.
Right. That's how, yeah. He's been very nice and helping me out, he's danced at a conference and our new guy doesn't start for a couple weeks.
Folks, this is Mr. Young. We should probably mute.
This meeting of the planning committee. Remove to Docket SU twenty-three dash one eight, Ramsey Canyon Cabin. Applicant returns special use modification to add four RV spaces and one additional cabin to existing two cabin business. Mr. and Mrs. Helpney.
Sheldon.
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 Thank you, Sheldon. I'm trying to do this, that's for your team. Will we please have the planning and records report? Spot.
Good evening. This is a special use authorization modification request, Docket SU twenty-three eighteen for guest lodging on a rule zone parcel. The applicants Jen and Greg Sheldon request a special use authorization to modify SU twenty, uh, zero-eight zero-three, which was an approval for two guest cabins. It was granted by this commission in two thousand eight. There is also private residence on the site. The establishment or modification of guest lodging is a special use in rural zoning. Applicants own two adjacent parcels, parcel one oh five four six zero zero seven A is four acres and it is the subject of this application. Parcel ending and four B is not. The zoning regulations define guest lodging as a building or group of buildings furnishing rooms or an area for accommodation for overnight or short-term lodging such as hotel or motel resorts, guest ranches, group camps, campgrounds, and may include recreational facilities, restaurants, meeting rooms, or similar facilities. This definition does not include recreational vehicle parks or bed and breakfast land uses. The subject parcel has a private residence, three rental cabins, and parking near Ramsey Canyon Road for day guests. The applicant's requesting to permit an additional cabin, the day parking, and four RV spaces through this request. On this slide, the four acre subject parcel is outlined. The location of the private residence and rental cabins are indicated. Both the hummingbird and cowboy cabins were a part of the original special use. Tonight, we're here to discuss the owl's nest cabin and rental RV spaces. On this slide, uh, it's site plan submitted with the request. The location of the cabins is provided and it shows the RV area that is up to three thousand square feet that is intended to accommodate up to four RVs that are up to twenty-four feet long. The RV area is between Ramsey Canyon Road and Owl's Nest Camp Cabin. The day parking is also adjacent to Ramsey Canyon Road on the southern end of the parcel. Public input. Staff received three letters in opposition from neighboring property owners. Respondents mentioned concerns about traffic, density, privacy, and noise. And we received seven letters in support from property owners in the area and many other additional letters of support from property owners outside of the three hundred foot notification. On this slide, green indicates support and red indicates opposition. And here is a photo of the day parking area. There are approximately four spaces. The use is within comfortable walking distance of Ramsey Canyon Preserve and the Folklore Museum. Here is a photo of the Owl's Nest Cabin and the area where the RV spark, uh, spaces are proposed. The property currently includes a well and three septic systems. SSVC serves it for electricity and it's located within the Fry Fire District. The Owl's Nest Cabin does not have an internal restroom. There is a porta potty on site for use by day visitors and future renters of the Owl's Nest Cabin and RV spaces. And here is a cowboy cabin previously permitted under SU zero-eight zero-three. Here is a hummingbird cabin, also permitted under SU zero-eight zero-three. You can also see a nature viewing area. Here is a hummingbird cabin, also permitted under SU 0803. You can also see a nature viewing area. Factors in favor of the request. The project with the recommended condition complies with all applicable criteria used to evaluate special use requests. It's consistent with the goals and policies of the comp plan. It is consistent and compatible with the zoning district purpose statement. More specifically, the proposed uses are consistent with five of the seven purpose statements for rural zoning districts in particular. It needs the less common purpose of providing recreational services compatible with rural living. Finally, the project is a locally owned business and provides a recreational service to local citizens. The economic development elements of the comp plan supports entrepreneurship and small business development. And with that, I'll pause for our commission discussion and the applicant's statement. The applicant is with us in person tonight.
We are Greg and Jen Sheldon, here in 76 East Ramsey Canyon Road. We wish to have this.
Thank you for having us today. We're here seeking to modify our special use permit for three additions that include day guests use on our property, another rental in an existing building, and four small clustered RV sites. Ramsey Canyon cabins have been in business since 2008 when the special use permit was unanimously issued to the previous owners of the property, Harry and Judy Gabbard. The special use permit allowed the owner operators the ability to rent two cabins that existed on the four acre property, which they moved on and set up a residence. We purchased the eight acre property in August of 21 and also live on site with our three children. We proceeded to clean and update the property which had fallen into disrepair. With Greg's undergraduate degree in landscape architecture and urban planning from Arizona State, we have taken great care and consideration in the continued development of the property, making sure to minimize impact on the environment, resources, and surrounding neighbors. The main demographic of our guests are primarily birders and nature enthusiasts. They are generally well-to-do, retired, very quiet, and they respect the property. They come to the area to escape the stress of their everyday life, enjoy the peace and climate of the canyon, and all of the natural beauty it has to offer. Coche County has many desirable ecotourism locations. Our guests have come to explore and they often use our location as a dump point. Our guests deal, shop, and patronize local businesses in the community, which increase the sales tax revenue for Coche County. Ramsey Canyon has four established businesses within it, two of which have been in operation for well over 30 years. The main attraction of the canyon is the Ramsey Canyon Preserve, which is operated by the Nature Conservancy and has been in operation since 1974. The Nature Conservancy, the nonprofit organization, does not pay any taxes to the county and owns approximately 380 acres in Ramsey Canyon. The preserve has been averaging 25,000 visitors annually since 2015, and the numbers have been increasing steadily. The latest year expected to get over 30,000 visitors. And that's the only ones that they report, not those who drive up and turn around. The preserve, as well as the other two businesses up the road from our property, already create a tremendous amount of traffic on Ramsey Canyon. We are just trying to capture a small portion of that existing traffic so that our business can thrive instead of just hoping to survive during these difficult economic times. Many of the preserve's visitors say our cabins do us its close proximity in the beauty of Ramsey Canyon. The preserve director, Peter Lightroom, highly recommends our accommodations on the recommendation from our guests and visitors who've been to our property. The preserve is closed on Tuesdays and Wednesdays, which does leave some uninformed visitors without the ability to explore Ramsey Canyon, which is one of the reasons we'd like to modify our special permit to add day guest usage to our property. We offer nature tracts and have a dedicated bird garden that has 20 various types of feeders, allowing them to be seeded. On the whole property, we maintain 50 feeders, which tracks more squirrels and wildlife for our guests to experience. Ramsey Canyon is world renowned as burning hotspot and the area is considered the hummingbird capital of the nation. It seems only natural to open up to the public to allow visitors from the local areas, while as guests from all over the world, the opportunity to experience the canyon in a different setting other than the preserves. Our property is on more just slope, making it much easier for mobility challenged visitors to get around on. There were existing trails on the property that were expanded upon that traversed the acres, offering different views and vantage points for guests to experience the floor and bottom. The trails are rock lined and colorful, which make them very easy to navigate and stay on. Guests are not allowed to run from the property or leave the trails in order to not disturb the environment as well as their neighborhood properties. As far as the property rental agreement, if guests agree that when they enter the property, trespassing or not just riding the properties is not tolerated, then guests will be asked to leave if they do not adhere to this policy. Excellent. Our second modification we're seeking is to be able to short-term rent a room in an existing group building that is on the property. The room we have created for our family and friends is a 12 foot by 12 foot room that has electricity in it. There is a sink outside the room as well as a portable bathroom. Because the unit is smaller and has minimal impact, it can be rented at reduced rate compared to the cabins we operate, which allows more guests the chance to stay in canyon and enjoy its splendor. While living on the property in the last two years, we noticed many smaller motorhomes and campers driving up to the preserve, with some of them being sent away because they were too big for their parking lot. We are proposing two sites, A and B, to accommodate RVs no longer than 24 feet, and two sites, C and D, for RVs no longer than 20 feet. The road out to the dominate tables much larger than this, such as 40 foot school buses, 33 foot garbage trucks, and delivery trucks. Many travelers prefer to stay in the own accommodations for the safety of their house and minimize contact these dangers provide, as well as the reduced cost for staying overnight. The RV sites are clustered in a very small area that is approximately 2,700 to 3,000 square feet, which is approximately 1/16 of an acre for only 1/128 of our entire eight acre property. The area is very small compared to the rest of the property. The RV sites are located adjacent to Ramsey Canyon Road, which minimizes noise and travel impact to the property and offers easy access. Most of the guests anticipate we anticipate traveling in the smaller sprinter vans or conversion vans. The RV sites are short-term rentals with a maximum stay length of 14 days. In our experience over the last two years, most of the rentals we've had processed in our counties have only been in the two to three day range. The RV sites will include 30 electric cookups and generators will not be allowed. We will not empty water or separate cookups to again minimize impact to the environment. These guests will not be staying long and they will be required to keep the gray and black water with them when they depart. There are two local gas stations within 10 miles and several that have dump station that can utilize to dump their tanks. Currently, there are no fires allowed in our cabins or anywhere on the property and that will remain for any additions made. We also promoted candles against smoking to help minimize fire danger. We've continued to cut entries, limbs, clothes, other treats to help mitigate fire danger. We do not allow any animals or children to be to 15, except in special circumstances. This is all in order to prevent noise and to protect the sensitive nature of the environment. Quiet hours logged in property from 9:00 PM until 8:00 AM, and we ask all guests to keep noise to a minimum of all times. There are no parties or events allowed by our guests and we have not had any issues with these rules in the past two years or complaints from any neighbors. We have worked very hard to create a clean, peaceful, and safe environment for our guests to enjoy Ramsey Canyon and have received considerable praise and amazing reviews, which have encouraged us to expand and offer more opportunities to the public to enjoy the place we follow. The majority of our direct neighbors, as well as numerous members of the surrounding area, have chosen to support our neighbors, and we have been thrilled with their level of interest, input, and camaraderie. We love where we live and care about our neighborhood and surrounding community. With these additions, we will be able to offer more amenities to the local community, as well as increase the tax revenue and eco floors and dollars and help support Coche County. We don't want to be another Coche County business that has been both in our works. Thank you for your time today. We appreciate your consideration from these modifications we're seeking to make.
Thank you very much. At this time, ready to have the public hearing open? Now, now call for comments from other persons. I do have requests. I'll start with those. Pat Sullivan, please. Please state your name and address, sir, and you have five minutes.
My name is Patrick Sullivan. I live at 35 East Ramsey Canyon Road, which is above the park of my own. Up the canyon from the site being discussed. Um, you know, wildlife biologist retired and had worked in association with uh, various land developments over the course of my career. Some with the county of Los Angeles, also a private company that friend mine and I started doing um, surveys of the different sites. And also with the RV Corps of Engineers, where those involved in in forcing aspects of the clean water acts, uh, they impinge on development in weapons. Anyway, I'm retired, you know, living happily in Ramsey Canyon. And I'm heading down to the site several times and I've admired the way that they've been running that operation to keep things natural as possible. And just thinking that the addition of activities that they're proposing, uh, will let, will snow, maybe a bit better on the canyon other than what we already have with lots of people driving up to the end and coming down. Anyway, I just said I think that too. My statement here, I'm in favor of the layer of project.
Thank you.
I live at 100 East Ramsey Canyon Road. Uh, my property is adjacent to Ramsey Canyon cabins and um, I am, I just want to say I live in Ramsey Canyon and I'm protective of this little piece of heaven I call home. I believe, I believe in protecting the canyon, as many of us do that live up there. Everybody does. In regards to Ramsey Canyon cabins, I can honestly say I have never heard any noise of any type coming from this property. Our property boundaries meet in the middle of the forest. I have never seen a guest trespass on my property. I would not even know that they are there, to be honest with you. It's quiet. Um. I do know that they monitor the property, uh, the guests, wildlife, 24 hours a day with cameras to ensure while one, the boundaries are respected. And of course, they are looking at wildlife. They are bringing in species of birds I have never known either have in the canyon. Um, they have a vast amount of wildlife on the property. They are protecting and supporting the environment. But I need to go back and say, I have heard from them twice. Once when there was a bear coming down into my property for my safety and for lines. But anyway, thank you. Um. I feel that they are protecting and supporting the environment. In my opinion, they are responsible stewards of Ramsey Canyon. Furthermore, they allow opportunity for others not as fortunate as we are to stay for a short time and enjoy the experience that we are also protective of. And there are a lot of people that don't have the money to to go to places like national parks and bring their family, but maybe they can spend just a couple of days up there in one of the little RV that they have and, and, and experiences. What's wrong with that? Um, so. I just want to have this. This is picture of a fawn caught in her neighbor's fence. Um, that's posing her. And the backside is Jen catching it on camera to say that it's life. And that was just the other day. She is a good steward. They both are of the canyon. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. April Kepner, please.
My name is April Kepner. I reside at 2230 East Suma Drive in Sierra Vista. But I am the owner of the Ramsey Canyon Inn Bed and Breakfast. I own 10 acres in the canyon and three structures on the Abbeville Bridge. Uh, my husband and I, Scott, we purchased a Ramsey Canyon Inn Bed and Breakfast, which sits up next to the Nature Conservancy's property. Our business has been thriving for 35 years in fact, and we continue that tradition. When we purchased, um, the property that was in dispay and had been on the market for years during the pandemic, the former owner was about ready to shut it down completely. So we came in during a very simple time for tourism and we purchased the Bed and Breakfast. And then shortly thereafter, Jen and Greg then purchased the Ramsey Canyon cabins. So we are both thriving businesses in the cabin or in the canyon. And I will say, as a business owner and a property owner and as a taxpayer in the canyon, I 100% support small businesses. We are not corporate teams with big pockets, not to mention the former presentation, but we are small people contributing to the community. I'm an Arizona native as well as Jen, and we all have children and we are giving back to the community. And one of the most important things is that Ramsey Canyon is world renowned for its birding and wildlife. And we want to share that with tourism and with guests coming up. As they mentioned, up to 30,000 guests that come up potentially this year, um, just to see the Nature Conservancy's property. And so to have a small percentage of that piece of tourism for people to stay on their property temporarily is an asset to support again tourism in the area, to support wildlife, to support birding, which is what southeast Arizona is really known for throughout the conversations today. They didn't even include our conversation. We heard a lot about birding. We heard a lot about the wildlife. We want to continue that tradition for southeast Arizona and specifically for Ramsey Canyon. So if they, as a small mom and pop run business, can continue doing what they're doing with a very small footprint, um, specifically these RV sites, these are not people running generators. They are not something, anything that would hurt the environment. They are, they are typically people with a nice RV setup. They're probably traveling around the country enjoying their retirement and they just want to stay a couple of days up in the cabin or in the canyon, I should say. So, um, as a, as the business owner in the canyon, uh, we 100% support what they are doing and we want to continue as small mom and pop run organizations to continue the traditions. Um, they're 15 years in as a business or 35 years in as a business. We want to continue that generation for years and years to come. So, thank you.
Scott Kepner?
My name is Scott Kepner. I also live at 2230 Suma Drive. And, uh, we're here representing 29 East Ramsey Canyon Road, which is where Bed and Breakfast is. Uh, we are 100% in support of Jen and Greg for doing. Um, they are on paper a competitor business arms, um, but that doesn't change the relationship that's been built. And there's 30,000 visitors that want to come back to the canyon every year. There's more than enough business to go around, so to speak. Um, if there's one thing I learned tonight from the commission, you guys care about wildlife and you guys care about tourism. And, uh, this is a no brainer for both of those, uh, so. Um, I also want to add to the level of, of money and resources that go into protecting the wildlife. It's not cheap or easy to maintain 50 bird feeders and attract 100, any different species of birds for your guests. It's not easy to keep track of the deer or the bear and coat of moody and all the other wildlife that's there. And we're both taking an active role as business owners to contribute to that. So with that said, 100% support.
Thank you. Is there anyone online that wants to speak to this application? Very well. Assuming the applicant can possibly vote.
I, I didn't want to say something here.
You don't imagine how you want to be.
It just wanted to make it noted that the opposition did not take the time or consideration to show up tonight to, to really oppose us. And unfortunately, some of the opposition is coming from a NIMBYism. Not in my backyard. And unfortunately, the person that had called out, you know, these things in the county, our property surrounds. And unfortunately, the person that had called out, you know, these fans in the county, our property surrounds their property. And we tried to be as friendly as we could and, and make friends. Yes, you could see the letters of support that we received from the surrounding area, as well as our direct neighbors. We reached out to these folks and they're trying to be as neighborly as possible, you know, with them. I just wanted to be noted that we're still there. We're still going to be, you know, trying to run this business with them right smack dab in our property and we do take every effort to take them into consideration when we're trying to mitigate those. And sometimes it's very hard to do because there are a lot of emotions at play. And sometimes they're a lot less friendly than I would want a neighbor to be. Not like these folks that showed up here for in support for us. Um, so with that said, I would really say, because none of the other opposition has been here, please grant us the floor of our RV sites that we are seeking so that I can support my family in a, in a good way at this time of high inflation. Like you said, the cost of doing business these days, Scott, had a control. And the things that I need to, to keep improving my property just get more and more expensive every day. And it, it makes it hard. So, you know, we're not making millions of dollars up there, kind of like the Nature Conservancy. We're always more lawyers than environmentalists if you actually look into it. They're a great, you know, group as well, you know, they're advocating for, for nature and wildlife. They're trying to do the right things. But, you know, their, their pockets are wide. We're just trying to capture a little bit of that, you know, traffic that is rolling up the roads will allow them to stay at our place, even just small units. You know, you know, they have only recommended to, but we really like to be able to rent for it. It gives the opportunity for us to, to do legitimately pay the taxes on that and contribute the values of the county. You know, that sales tax, that's all I'm saying. Thank you.
Public hearing is now closed. It's time for a commission discussion. Are there any questions for Abby and Marcy?
Just have her comment. I grew up in Ramsey Canyon. I knew the Hants very well. Their grandson was my best friend. So I know the property very well. I've seen huge changes around it. It's all been put positive, other than the traffic. There was, she knew every car going up the road, but we're talking twenty years ago. It's fine. How long's it been? So, I'm glad to see people that care and made it a destination for the rest of the world to see. Appreciate it.
Mr. McHenry. What? No, I agree that I've spent some time all the way up there. I know people who live there. You may know only the university system state, but it's seventy-seven, okay? And, um, I think I know the germs picture. And this is a complaint, this is a, and this is probably.
But, you know, can I speak to that just for a moment? I did reach out to Gail Griffin and unfortunately she is a very busy, you know, person. And she was away for quite a while while we were hosting, um, meetings. We had our neighbors, even the ones in opposition, come over to our property to sit there and talk and show, you know, them the picture or not the actual place and have an open discussion about what's going on, but I couldn't, couldn't get enough time to get her to my property. She just came back. But I think with some, you know, talking with her and really kind of discussing what it was, her opposition would probably turn it to, I can't speak to that because it didn't happen. But I want you to know that I did reach out to her because I take all of our neighbors into consideration when we're trying to make, you know, these modifications and things like that. Because, you know, it's a tight knit reunion. You have to take all these people into consideration. We look out for each other. That's how we operate.
You are saying hummingbird sanctuary because of perp, I mean, do you know? That's, that's known.
You have? Mr. Raskin.
I have a question. Basically, the staff, they say guest lodging limited to two rental RV sites. They're active before. Is there any special reason for the drop to do?
So, okay, uh, let's see. Staff recommends the RV guest lodging be limited to two rental RV sites. And please recall, the applicant has requested four. But as a means to lessen off-site impacts that come with additional density, staff recommends limiting the site to two, as noted. A lot of what draws people to Cochise County and the preserve is the desire to be in a dark, quiet space, and this is rural zoning. Uh, these concerns were reflected in the letters of objection that we received. However, this is up to the commission, um, and ultimately could be amended, um, from what is written.
Uh, do you have anything to re, um, say for the RV sites? Not more than two weeks, fourteen days. Does the same apply to the tack room? We've got a short-term rental effect.
Correct. Nobody's ever stayed that long anyway, so we're just don't even.
Right. We're a short-term rental operation. Like she said, most of the folks that are coming here, they're not staying long-term. And especially in those, even if they're homes, they're, they're two to three days. To be quite honest, most of the time they're going to be vacant. Our busiest season is between February and May. Primarily March and April is when the, the largest amount of people, even though it refers to the heat. Right. It's just burning season.
If you could come to the microphone so we can capture it for our commissioners.
I wasn't sure. So primarily, we would be busiest and, and I don't even know at this point how many vehicles I would capture or how many folks would want to stay in that tack room as well by twelve room that's in that existing building that we didn't have to do a whole lot to. Um, but those RV, you know, sites, I, I really don't even know how many people would really be staying there, you know, um.
Let me just add something to. Keeping in mind, they're currently up to twenty-four feet, but I don't know if you guys are aware, there's also the Ramsey Canyon RV park down the road from us and those people live there. And so that has already been very bothered and they have sixteen sites of people who live at the RV park unlike what we're working for to capture a well-to-do audience. So the RVs that cost more than most people's houses and generally sprinter and size that are just going to stay for a short amount of time that we really need to rent in order to continue the business, really.
To stay, well, we're just not trying to, we're just trying to create, you know, a couple of additional revenue streams or to, like, like you said, be able to thrive instead of survive. But yes, the, the quick answer is short-term rentals. We're not allowing people to stay there instead of shop, which is why I didn't look into, you know, water hookups. I have water in the area, but I didn't want to use as much water on my property or have to drill another well. Same thing with the septic. We there facilities within ten miles of our property that people can take their gray and black water to as they depart and get rid of it in there. I didn't want to have to put more septic and then all the expense and all the more soup going into the property.
Mr. Young, Ms. Welch.
Yes, I, I just, I totally respect that your neighbors and competitors actually are there supporting you and, and I appreciate and I'm happy that they're there to support you. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Welch.
I don't have any further questions. Everything's been answered sufficiently. It sounds like a great place.
Thank you.
I now call for the public to summary of the communication.
Based on the factors in favor of approval, staff recommends conditional approval of the special use request subject to the following conditions. The first three are standard conditions related to acceptance of conditions permitting timeframes and modifications they apply and have not been modified by this request. Condition four, staff recommends that the RV guest lodging be limited to two rental RV sites, as we have just discussed. Condition five, uh, permits one additional guest cottage, the Alzinas, for a total of three rental cabins. Condition six, RV sites shall be, shall provide electrical hookups and the use of generators is prohibited. This is to mitigate potential noise concerns. Uh, condition seven, applicant must meet all health department requirements for guest lodging. Uh, condition eight, campfires by guests are prohibited. Although this area is served by fry fire, the condition is to address potential fire concerns. This is a highly wooded area. So that concludes my presentation. I'm available for additional questions and there's a sample motion on the slide for the commission's consideration.
Op for this motion first, please.
And Jen. I'm Mr. Prendt, Dr. Nissin, twenty-three against eighteen, our personal one-shoot plan, dash forty-six, dash zero-zero-seven-eight. My main specialty is to recommend this here, dash zero-eight, dash zero-three. But the conditions of approval recommend by staff, the factors of approval will constitute any time and spatch.
Do you have a second? Second session. Okay, it's time for.
And Jen, I was about to make a motion to, uh, modify that to allow the four RV spaces.
Second. Now, second by Mr. Markins. I think I'll do a little talk around that. Mr. Montgomery.
Hi.
Mr. Longbach.
Hi.
Mr. Hawkins. Mr. Young.
Hi.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Hi.
Mr. Markinsky.
Hi.
Mr. Saunders.
Hi.
Ms. Welch.
Hi.
Chair votes say, take the word, Mr. Popsworth, that's going to be a taken fit. Motion carries. Do you want this? So why do we do with the first? Then we need to vote on the first one.
Yeah.
Mr. Montgomery voting on your original motion. Mr. Longbach. Mr. Hawkins.
Hi.
Mr. Young.
Hi.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Hi.
Mr. Markinsky.
Hi.
Mr. Saunders.
Hi.
And Ms. Welch.
Hi.
Chair of stades. Motion carries. Congratulations.
It's not high enough seeing game, okay?
So, you know, to us, at Ramsey, you're coming back home, so.
Standing off there, I notice.
They can.
See, standing house is not being helped. Getting to the, basically, right? Thank you very much.
I appreciate it. And then there's a link for, because we have asked the, you see, girls.
It's serving their future. Okay, it's a lot. I'm not sitting in this place, but we pulled this race. My job, there's a lot of jobs that I say, you know, we gotta have to understand. We see us.
Yeah. All right. Uh, recent items, the Akatia storage special use that was unanimously approved by the commission at the June meeting. Um, that was appealed. The board considered an appeal at their July twenty-fifth meeting. The board did elect to support the commission's, uh, decision and denied the appeal. However, they did add two additional conditions as recommended by staff. The, the additional conditions related to buffering and fencing. And these items were considered within the staff report, but not ultimately originally applied to the special use. So, end of story, like your decision was upheld. Um, docket, the rezoning twenty-three thirteen, the Casador Trail rezoning, that was from RU ten to RU four. Um, that was approved by board. CPA twenty-three zero-three, RZ twenty-three thirteen, Hereford Mosen. Uh, that was heard, again, all of this was on July twenty-fifth. Uh, although the commission provided a recommendation of support by vote to five to three, the board did not approve either request. So ultimately, that was denied. Uh, next month, we have two dockets. One is a special use for animal husbandry in Hereford. And the other is a downzoning in the Babakamari area. And that's all I got.
First, let me, uh, assume the presentation's, the aerial photos from drones, and then you.
Yes.
You can see the cloud throughout the way up. I'll need to know right now, but I'd like to know more about the drones. Does it seem from the guy that is, if you fly that?
Um, well, I am a drone pilot, um, that the county paid for. But actually, um, lately I've been going with Dan, so there's two of us. One can spot and the other can fly. And we've been trying to do that for the special uses and the variances. I think they're very helpful. Yeah. Because Google Earth can do some, but here are like the dirt roads and stuff. So, um, the county has, actually, our department has two drones and, um, really helpful. They can do video as well, but we've been using them. Okay.
And then you locate office, office.
Yep.
There you go. Yes.
Angels. And we call meeting adjourned.